Good evening, everyone. We are coming back into open session. This meeting, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, we're going to move on to item B two, which is land acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chochino, Mewikma, Karkin, Aloney peoples, and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. I would like to welcome everyone to the February twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one special meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education. This is our fourth study session on COVID nineteen and schools, and this study session is designed to be a listening session, so we can hear what our community feels and thinks about this issue, wherever they may lie on the spectrum. The mission of the West Contra Costa Unified School District is to prepare students for post-secondary education and to be responsible, thinking, contributing members of our global society. We believe in public education as the most important function in a democratic society. We believe we must, one, treat everyone with courtesy, dignity, and respect; two, provide safe and nurturing environments in which to learn, teach, work, and participate; three, serve our students by working as partners with our community to develop well-rounded, lifelong learners and contributing members of a global society; four, take responsibility for our behavior and performance to ensure the highest possible achievement of all students, employees, and our school community; five, provide equitable and essential communication and support for successful learning, teaching, working, and participating; six, respect, celebrate, and welcome the diversity, uniqueness, and contributions of all members of our school community. A board member should not subordinate the education of children and youth to any partisan principle, group, interest, or the members' own personal interest. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities through the Zoom app or by telephone. To indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item, raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak, your hand must be raised before public comment begins for the item. To access translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the globe icon and word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available via Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Mr. Duffy, can I have the roll call, please?
Yes. Board President Phillips.
Present.
Board Clerk Trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, present.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi.
Present.
Trustee Christian.
Present.
Trustee Reckler.
Evening, I'm present.
Student trustee Leung, I think, is with us.
Present.
And student trustee Emiliano.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duffy. Now, we'll move on to item B five, report ratification of closed session. There is nothing to report out of closed session this evening. Now, we will move on to item C one, which is update on COVID nineteen and schools by staff.
Thank you. And Board President Phillips, just so you're aware, we did put the two requests for presentations, one on sort of the general legislative framework and the other on sports and athletics. They are together in one deck. I'm going to stop firmly after the legislative, just so there's a clean break, and then you can let me know what you want to do. But there's just one attachment this evening.
Thank you, sir.
We can bring that up when we're ready.
We're ready.
Great. So, good evening to everyone, community, staff, families, partners, everyone who's with us tonight. Thank you for being here. The board asked us to share a little bit of the big picture legislative and health context around COVID nineteen and schools. So I'm going to share some of those in fairly broad brushstrokes for us as we move forward. So let's go to the next slide. So the first thing I wanted to share this evening is that on the left side, you'll see the current county health conditions. You see that we are in the purple tier, and that is made up of three major aspects: the cases per one hundred thousand, the positivity rate, and an equity metric. And on the right side of the slide, you will see the tiers and what defines those tiers from purple, red, orange, and yellow. And this is important because over the next couple of slides, we'll talk about the implications for schools. Schools can reopen in the purple and the red tiers if very specific requirements are fulfilled. So we check the cap. It's okay, you can go to the next slide. Those statistics, which I just showed you, are clearly marked on the county health website, and we check those daily, and we do see the numbers coming down, which is encouraging for our community and region. So, right into some of the legislative context that's happening around us. Most recently, there has been an introduction of a couple of bills around school reopening and learning recovery, and they are known as SB AB eighty-six. They involve two billion dollars for in-person instruction in the spring, and they involve another four point six billion dollars for learning recovery in the summer and fall, and this is for the entire state of California. They have not yet been approved by the legislature, and a safety plan, known as the COVID prevention plan, is required to be posted before opening school. And the district must adopt the plan by June first as an addendum to the LCAP. We can go on to our next slide. So let me first talk about the summer learning loss grant of four point six billion dollars throughout the state. So these grants may be used to accelerate learning, address student needs such as extended learning time, PD, professional development, social-emotional learning, access to school meals, and more. This is an estimated twenty million dollars state money to WCCUSD. The time this money is able to be used is from the start of summer break through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. And at a minimum, support must be offered to students who are low-income, English learners, foster youth, homeless, at risk of abuse, quote-unquote disengaged, below-grade level, and students with disabilities. And there is local flexibility to define that further. The current interpretation of this legislation is that no spring opening is required to access these funds. That interpretation has sort of gone back and forth, but the most current interpretation is no matter what happens for us in the spring, we will see these dollars. We can go to the next slide. The in-person grant, which is made up of the state's two billion dollars set aside, which is also the same two billion dollars that you may have heard Governor Newsom talk about in earlier months around the purple, is what we might call the red tier plan. And in this plan, grant recipients who want to open their schools would be required to offer in-person instruction via stable cohorts by April fifteenth. And this has to be done to vulnerable students, and I've listed some of those there: students with disabilities, foster youth, homeless, English learners, students unable to access online instruction, disengaged students, and students at risk of abuse. Districts have flexibility to determine student prioritization, so there is local flexibility to determine who is most at need also. Grant recipients, this is important, grant recipients would be required to offer in-person instruction for all students in elementary school by April fifteenth or within fifteen days of reaching an adjusted daily case rate of seven per hundred thousand or lower, which is in the red tier. By April first, an LEA, meaning a district, must certify that all of their students have access to technology needed for online instruction. This is a projected nine million dollars to the district if we do not opt out, and the funds must be expended by July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, a relatively quick manner. Let's go to our next slide. We are also seeing federal dollars. We will see twenty-four million dollars in one-time grants for WCCUSD through the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Act. These dollars can be used for such strategies to accelerate learning, and I've listed some of them there. There are no reopening plans required to receive these dollars. These are for us, no matter what our plan is, to be able to support our students. The COVID nineteen safety plan is known as the CSP, and this is where we get into a little bit of acronym soup. The safety plan known as the CSP is made up of two parts: the CPP, the COVID Prevention Program, and what's known as the checklist or the cover sheet. So sometimes those terms get interchanged, the CSP and the CPP. But the COVID safety plan must be submitted by April first with a collective bargaining agreement if districts are to receive the in-person grants. The safety plan must include an asymptomatic testing cadence for students and staff, as detailed in the Department of Public Health guidance. And that means you would have asymptomatic testing bi-weekly for districts that are in the red or purple, and increasing to weekly if a district is in a county with a daily case rate greater than fourteen per one hundred thousand. And so asymptomatic, just to be clear, is preventative testing. It's for those who are not showing symptoms, and that's what asymptomatic means. LEAs, districts that have a safety plan and a corresponding collective bargaining agreement, meaning that our labor partners have agreed with that CSP and agreed that it is final and posted. If that agreement is in place by March fifteenth, the LEAs are exempt from the asymptomatic testing requirement. The testing costs around fifty-five dollars for each uninsured student and staff. And I was going to do the math problem out here, and maybe we'll talk about it with the board, but this is an incredibly expensive proposition if being done twice a week. And just to note, a collectively bargained approval of the CSP is not an approval of a return to instruction. It's an approval and an agreement on our safety standards and protocols for the district. Let's go to our next slide. The Centers for Disease Control and the CDPH guidelines, just a quick note on that. The CDC recommends schools reopen with strong mitigation strategies. Those include face coverings, physical distancing, handwashing, cleaning, contact tracing, et cetera. The CDC does not currently recommend schools symptom screen for students. They recommend screening at home before school, and students who are sick should not attend school in person. The Department of Public Health of California, as I mentioned, requires the CPP to be complete and posted before opening, and that any public and private schools report to their local health officer information about any staff or students tested positive for COVID nineteen. Lastly, just to recap, important dates to be aware of. For the in-person grant, you would need to post the CSP by April first, or you'd post it by March fifteenth with the collective bargaining agreements in order to remove the mandated asynchronous testing requirement. And as mentioned earlier, by June first, make sure that any funds, any ESER funds received are approved in an addendum to the LCAP. So that's a quick summary of what's happening sort of legislatively at the state and federal level, both around money and health, which I think is what the board, which I know is what the board requested this evening, so I hope that's helpful. And we can return to the first slide. And then, Mr. Phillips, just let me know if you would like us to just continue right into the athletic slides and work our way through those, or are we stopping for questions now?
Please continue to the athletic slides.
Okay. Sorry about that, Mr. Jordan.
No problem.
Let's go right to, I think, slide thirteen or so. And so we have a team of people who oversees safety and athletics under Dr. Wald, Shaka Meriwether, Julio Franco, Michael Booker, really collaborate on safety operations, athletics. Rules literally just changed over the past ten days, so we hope to give you the most up-to-date information on athletics.
So, thank you very much, Superintendent Duffy. You can go to the next slide. So, since back in August, our coaches, our athletic directors, and our high school principals have all been working with the district around athletics. We have had many of our athletes doing in-person conditioning on and off in cohorts since September. We did have to do a pause around the holidays as we had a very large surge across all of California. Like many places, we did pause that, but the guidance in January was to return back towards that in-person conditioning. We had guidance in December that outlined how the sports would be played by placing sports in tiers, which sports would be able to be played based on where we were. But then last week, everything changed significantly when Governor Newsom announced that high school football was to be offered this school year even in the red tier. So if we can go to the next slide, we'll kind of look at what those tiers were. And then we're going to talk about what sports may be offered. We're going to talk about the safety protocols and some of the different facility issues. So all of our guidelines are coming from the California Department of Public Health. So the acronym CDPH, as you see all over the place, that is California Department of Public Health, they've provided guidelines specifically for athletics. And you'll see some crossouts on sports for the January, April, the March, June. What really is happening is outdoor sports are going to be able to commence. Indoor contact sports and indoor sports, for the most part, are still not going to be able to happen until we get into that orange and yellow tier. Football and water polo, that are considered high-contact sports, and soccer, if you are in the red or purple, you will have to have a cadence of COVID testing for the participants as part of that. The most recent guidance, as of two days ago, is the California Department of Public Health is going to create that testing protocol and fund that testing protocol. If we can go to the next slide, please. This is earlier this week where each county was. You can see a couple counties near us have moved into the red tier there, which is substantial, but most of the state was still in the purple tier, having those different issues that they had to do on what sports they could do. Next slide, please. With that, I'm going to pass it to Shaka Meriwether, who is our coordinator focused on athletics and student voice and student engagement. Shaka?
Thank you, Dr. Wall. Good evening, members of the board. So we've been working with our league representatives since last year, pretty much, and as the situation has changed as far as what's available, we've made different changes to our way that we're going to go about athletics. And the biggest thing that we've been communicating is that although there are many tiers and many school districts are doing different things, our school district has an MOU that we put in place, which actually guides how we operate. And one of those things was around traveling outside of the school district for participating in sports and the way that we travel as well. So that's always been an understanding with our league that we will not be traveling outside of Contra Costa County. And even as of today, when we're making adjustments to the schedule, that is exactly what they've honored. Next slide, please. So around the facilities, and as Dr. Wall said earlier, we've been doing limited pods of cohorts of what we're calling conditioning or activity, so students can pretty much stay engaged during this whole time. And as far as the locker rooms being utilized, we have not allowed the student athletes to utilize the locker rooms, as well as there's been very limited restroom use as well. So as Dr. Wall said earlier, the indoor sports, which happens inside of the facilities as of right now, is a no-go because it's in the yellow tier as well. Next slide, please. So what you're looking at on your screen now is an agreed schedule with the TCal that the athletic directors and the principals came to an agreement, actually today, around two-thirty, as to creating a schedule for the actual dates you have here. And the way they've broken it out is into two seasons. So season one will begin with these sports, as you see here. It's important to note that water polo is pending the availability. We use the outside facility for that, and it's currently not available due to renovations. And then volleyball, which is an indoor sport, is in the yellow tier. So as of right now, it's off the table. As conditions get better, however, it is believed that then the sports can resume. And then the same as if conditions, for whatever reason, happen to change and get worse, then sports will take a pause. Next slide. And then this is the continuation of the second season of sports that are available, which you can see on your screen there. Again, at the bottom, swimming falls into that pending category because it uses the same facility. Not only it impacts our school campus, but it also impacts the other schools across the league. And then the last two, basketball and wrestling, are indoors. So those are currently on pause because they're in the yellow tier, and they are indoor. So, next slide. And actually, I believe I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Booker for this portion of the presentation.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. So when we talk about safety measures, we're talking about the guidance from the CDPH and the county health department. So these are safety measures that are for outdoor sports. Like has previously been mentioned, we are currently in the purple tier. So once we get to the red and orange tiers, more outdoor sports will be played. But these guidance are really simple, and it's about compliance. And basically, it's face covering, which all people should be wearing when they're involved in the sport. But with the players, they are only required to wear those when they're not participating in the sport. The coaches and the staff are required to wear them at all times. As far as observers go, although we don't anticipate having spectators, we do require that observers be socially distanced, and that's six feet, and be a non-member of the household for those people. And then as far as sharing items, we ask that the players not share water bottles, as well as personal items, which includes clothing. Next slide, please. When we talk about mixing with other households, we require that, prior to and post-practice or competition, that the households not intermingle with each other and make sure that they don't gather at any time during either practice or competition. And then limiting the indoor activity. So when we talk about indoor activity, we talk about weight room, the gym, and things like that. So we are required that they do not go inside and they not participate in the weight room as well as the gym. And then all associated other activities. So, you know, most teams have dinners and film studies. At this time, that is completely prohibited. And we are making sure that they adhere to these current guidance. As far as the process for practice goes, we have a screening process that each school is required to do prior to these athletes getting on the field. If they don't fulfill the requirements that were given, they are not allowed to practice. So as far as the safety, this is a brief overview, but as far as the safety standards go, we totally adhere to CDPH and the county health guidelines. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Franco.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Good evening. So there will be a limit on observers-spectators for practice and games. To ensure physical distancing and a purpose revision, only the athletes immediate household members will be allowed, i.e. the family members who are transporting our athletes to the games. We will consider video streaming so that the families can watch live games from home. Next slide. There will be mandatory testing for both coaches and students for sports that are on the purple tier. The parents of our athletes will need to sign informed consent, acknowledging the risk involved. And finally, testing results will be rapidly available, and results should be available within twenty-four hours of each game.
So the plan with football, for example, is testing the day before the game. If there is any positives, that game would not occur, is the simplest way. And I believe that concludes our presentation on the current status of athletics.
Thank you very much for that presentation. We are now going to move to board questions. Board, this was meant to be an overview. We all have the ability to get more information in the Friday memo. And we are here tonight to really listen to our public, so I'm going to ask each one of you to ask one question about this overview, so we can begin hearing from the people. And we are starting on this evening. And we are starting on this evening with trustee area one, which is Smith Foltz.
So my question is very simple. It has to do with sports. Dr. Wall, are you coming here asking us for guidance about what you just showed? Or are you coming here telling us this is what's going to happen?
We were not asking for guidance. We have been following the CIF and California Department of Public Health regulations and have been participating in the conditioning portions since the first day of school. We've, since back in August, we've been under the operation of following the guidance of the league and the Department of Health, and we continue to do so.
Thank you very much for that question and answer. We're going to go on to trustee area two, which is Mr. Othary Christian.
Thank you, President Phillips. No questions.
Thank you very much, sir. We're going to go on to trustee area three, which is Mr. Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you, President Phillips. I'm area four, but, but thank you, I appreciate that.
I gave you my district. Area four, I'm sorry.
You're totally fine. Dr. Wall, where can I find the safety protocols and procedures for athletics since we haven't seen them?
So we have, we will make sure they're posted and we'll send them to the board members. The athletic directors have copies and we'll make sure that a copy of everything is sent to all the trustees as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question, representative from area three and answer. Moving on to, should have, now I want to say area four, area five, which is trustee Reckler.
Yeah, I thought you were going to say four. Thank you for your presentation. I just would like a little bit of clarification on the legislation. I know it's like every day it's different. The in-person 2 billion, are there any restrictions on that? And is that like a firm thing or is that still being negotiated? And the same thing for the CSP COVID safety plan and CPP and the checklist, is that all things that we need to do now? Or is that still, you know, like a, something that's evolving?
Sure. So the $2 billion that the governor had originally set aside, the legislature then basically said, here's what we're going to do with that $2 billion. And they came up with their plan around bringing schools back in the red tier by April 15. That has not been enacted. So it is proposed, it has not been enacted. I know they're working quickly to try to bring all of these things together. We're under the impression that it will be enacted, but it has not yet been enacted. Then the COVID plan does have to be, so two things, the, the safe, the final safety plan, which is made up of the CPP, has to be posted seven days before we go back to school. We have posted a draft version of it on our website that has pretty much everything that we think we need. We have not had extensive time to sit down with our bargaining units and look over every detail of that. And we hope to be able to finalize that with them next week. And hopefully we can make sure that we're all on the same page about our safety protocols. And then it would need to be posted. And like I shared earlier, if we wanted to go back earlier or as part of the in-person, then it would need to be posted seven days before we go back.
Okay. And just to clarify one more time, is this part of a legislative package or is this like county health or?
This is specifically legislative, so it doesn't have to do with the county health. It's, you know, it's, it's really a state budget incentive to try to help schools get a number of targeted students at least back into physical school.
Okay, thank you. It's very hard to keep up.
Thank you, ma'am. We're going to, remember, we're going to do one question. So we're going to move on to Mr. Liam.
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. We are going to move on to Ms. Emiliano.
I just wanted to say thank you for your presentation and I have no questions.
My question is this. If it's safe to bring black and brown bodies on campus to condition their bodies, if it's safe to bring black and brown children onto campus to condition their bodies, why is it not safe to bring black and brown children on campus to condition their minds? That's my question.
I think that's a question that from what I understand, the board would like to answer together and answer that together going forward over the next couple of sessions with potentially decisions about that question coming in mid-March.
We just had a meeting where we talked about evasiveness. I'm asking you, Mr. Duffy, as the superintendent, to answer that question.
Well, I think there is a difference between students strictly being outside for limited practices and maybe some games versus working through, let's say, a comprehensive high school of 1,500 students. And so I think those are the complications that we have to work through and work through together for whatever decision that we make. I think we want to, of course, exercise both mind and body, but I do see the return to the full school as a much more complicated process than smaller outside conditioning.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy, for answering that question. We are now about to begin public comment. We will have more than one public comment during this meeting, but the first one is going to begin now on this item. So if you would like to make public
President Phillips, I have a point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
Since some of our trustees didn't ask a question, may I have one question, one more question? Can you offer that to me?
Yes, ma'am.
My question is for Dr.
I'm sorry. Hold, hold on one second. You're saying because somebody's, oh, you're saying because somebody skipped, you want to take, you want their time? Is that what you're saying?
May I have, yes. May I have, may I have one time to ask one more question?
What I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm not going to do that tonight because what we're trying to do is give most of the time to the public to actually say what they need to say. And we have the ability to follow up with staff when we need to. Which the public doesn't. So if you want to raise your hand now, because we're going to move on to public comment, there are 20 hands up, going once, going twice, two and a half, two and three quarters, three, it's gone. All right. I see 36 people. And this is, and this is, and board, I'm asking you all, I see no, if I don't see any objections, I'm going to let people talk. Okay? So you got a minute and 30 seconds with those 36 people that we had, okay? On this item. Go ahead, Mr. Wall.
So I will start the public comment. I will remind folks, we have at least one that's a Zoom user. If you can try to rename yourself, that would be helpful. We're supposed to have a first and last name, but the first public speaker
I'm sorry, real quick, President Phillips, I'm sorry to interrupt. You said a minute and 30 seconds, correct? It's a minute and 30 seconds. If people, because of the amount of people who are going to be talking tonight, if people don't have their names right, if people, we're going to have to move on. We will have a second opportunity for public comment later on. So this is not your only chance. All right. Let's go, Mr. Wall.
First one is Ella is Kay, okay, hold on, I lost my whole thing, just one second, is Kay Hardy. You may unmute.
Good evening. Kelly Hardy, I'm the parent of a third grader. Our kids need the school board to lead and to prioritize the wellbeing of students. Other districts are opening, even large diverse districts that are largely low-income families and black and brown families. I want the board to commit to getting kids who will, who want to, to be back on campus this spring, even if it's limited pilots. In-person opportunities should be offered first to students with special needs if they want them. Here's one example. My kid currently has 20 minutes of Zoom on Fridays. That's it. He'd absolutely benefit from some in-person time with his teacher and classmates. And there's plenty of room for that to happen outside in this gorgeous weather that we enjoy in California on school grounds with masks. I imagine some teachers would be very happy to give up all their amazing long hours of professional development and be willing to come in for a few hours. Maybe that's a good idea and maybe it's not, but we need some kind of creative leadership that's focused on supporting students. I was really struck at the beginning of the meeting. I'll paraphrase, it was something about the board needs to be, must not subordinate anything to the students' interests. And that's what we want. We want you to focus on the students' interests. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mira. You may speak.
Hi, thank you. My name is Mira Rosman. So I have two children in our district and I've been on a number of these calls for about several months. So I heard the mission statement as well, and I was heartened by it because I think that it is a good statement, but I was also disheartened by it because I feel like we are not, you, you guys are not upholding that mission statement. So my job as a parent is to advocate for my children. And I have heard stories and stories and stories where because I want my children back in school, I'm against teachers and I am an inconsiderate a-hole. I'll use that. I don't, my job is to advocate for my children. Your job as a school board is to take all the feedback from all the groups and distill that into something that is a realistic plan to move forward. I don't think you're doing that. It seems like everyone is quite beholden to their own special interests and not really taking into account the fact that there is a wide world of people out there in schools successfully doing this. And I don't understand the foot dragging, the, the fear mongering, the, I don't even know what to call it exactly. Certainly my voice will be heard when I go to the ballot box next and certainly when you guys ask me for, for more money out of my property taxes. So I think you should get a plan together to put kids back in school because the tide's going to turn away from you. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Gabriella Micaletti. You may unmute.
Hi, I'm a first grade teacher at Verde Elementary. I'm so glad to see sign language and community response on this meeting and the Brown Act being acknowledged. That's super encouraging. We're getting closer to actually hearing from the majority of the community on this. As a teacher, I really want to talk about my students because I talk to the parents and we don't want to go back until it is safe. And as Mr. Phillips acknowledged this week, COVID brings death and that is what we are terrified of. I'd feel unbelievably awful if I brought students back and death occurred from that. I really hope that black and brown bodies being brought back onto campus are not being brought as experimental bodies. And I really, really hope that we will really put students first. We'll think about how can we can support their minds and how we can support their bodies because the current conditions are different in the community, whether you're white, whether you're brown, whether you're black, it's so different. And to treat everything the same really hurts people of different communities. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Deborah Larson. You may unmute.
Hi, my name is Deborah Larson. I am a part of WCC Safe Open Schools Facebook page. I live in Richmond. I have two girls who attend Michelle Obama in elementary. They are kindergarten and fourth grade. Both of my girls have a diagnosis of high functioning autism. They have active IEPs. These goals center around social emotional growth and they are not being met through Zoom. Zoom is a sensory nightmare for kids who have any kind of sensory needs like my girls do. It is a loud environment with excessive stimuli. It is hard to read people's intentions and language through Zoom, something at baseline, which is very hard for my girls. My fourth grader daughter and kindergarten daughter are suffering greatly during this time of distance learning. They have had excessive meltdowns at home, emotional regulation issues, and my kindergartner is simply now refusing to do the schoolwork at all. My fourth grader has been diagnosed with clinical depression and has dealt with suicide ideation. I'll repeat that. My fourth grader has been diagnosed with clinical depression and dealt with suicide ideation that I directly correlate with distance learning. I work as a registered nurse and I've had dealt with the ramifications of COVID daily at my job for a year now. A year ago, things were scary. We didn't know what was going on. There was a lack of PPE at my job, let alone no word of a vaccine. Now we know about the virus. We have PPE to go around and we have adequate ways to protect ourselves. I implore us and you guys to find a way to open our schools. As a society, we do best and it's our job to protect and help the most vulnerable of our society, and that includes children, especially those with special needs like my children.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Katie Rohan. You may, you may unmute.
Can you just clarify for me quickly if we're supposed to be talking about sports specifically or in general?
You can speak about anything that was just presented in this item.
All right. I'm going to speak about other things later, but for now I'm going to talk about sports. Just want to say it's pretty horrifying and a disrespectful slap in the face to spend 15 minutes of our time talking about how safely high school students can throw their bodies on top of one and another in a sport like April. Yeah, students with disability, one occupational
So our next public speaker is, and I apologize if I pronounce this wrong, Maya Bazianik. You may unmute.
Hi, my name is Maya Bazianik. I have a sixth grader. First, I just want to say that I see the pressure you're all under and I want to express my gratitude for the hard work that you're doing on behalf of our community. I represent a family that is in a good situation for distance learning. I am fairly risk averse, excuse me. My husband and I are both self-employed with a lot of flexibility. Our son has literally the greatest teacher ever and he hasn't been suffering in any overt way. If you had asked me a couple of months ago, I would have said that we were okay with doing distance learning for the remainder of the school year. My view has changed. I am starting to see some of the worrisome effects of a year without in-person education. I see my child developing an addiction to online games, less and less enthusiasm for outdoor play and an overall disengagement with academics. He's okay, but he really could be much better. While I think distance learning was absolutely appropriate earlier in this crisis, we have enough information now on how to resume in-person learning safely such that it's really inexcusable not to be doing so, given the potential for harm to our kids. I believe our district needs to start getting kids back and onto campus as soon as possible, even if that is in some very limited way. The sooner our kids can get some face time with teachers and other students, the better. I also have real concerns that our district is going to lose a lot of families if we don't get our kids back in class in some capacity this spring. I know many families that are actively discussing private school or homeschooling and others that have already left the district. So I implore you to be more proactive now about creating in-person opportunities for our kids immediately. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Karina Samkin. You may unmute.
Good evening, board members. My name is Karina Samkin and I'm the parent of a fourth and fifth grader. I would like to speak in favor of school reopening. I have listened to all the board study sessions and based on all the presenters' testimonies, I am now convinced that schools can be opened safely. While renegotiating all the union MOUs seems like a daunting task, a less extensive amendment could be proposed to try a pilot program. Please direct your staff to create plans to just try something, anything, this spring semester, even if it's a voluntary program with a limited number of students or staff on campus. This is being done in other districts with success, so why can't we try in our district? Similarly, so many of our neighboring districts already have plans for a hybrid model this spring. At Monday night's meeting, the Marin superintendent stressed the need to get started now so that we are prepared for when everyone comes back. By starting small this spring, we can work together to learn how best to address concerns and position ourselves for summer and fall. Our students deserve for us to try and they deserve for us to try right now. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Our next speaker is Gregory Everett. You may unmute.
Hi, I'm Gregory Everett. I'm a parent of an 11 grader and a soon to be ninth grader. I agree with schools reopening, but I've noticed that my kids' sleeping pattern is off. They're up all night. They are very disengaged in class. The teachers are not really engaging in class or teaching them anything. So please open these campuses back up, put these kids to be back in school. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jean Kinster.
Hello, I'm a teacher in the district and I just have some questions for you. So if we're back in school, will the kids be forced to have different classmates? Different teachers, different schools, different schedules? What if masks and six feet away are not followed? What if the classes are not getting cleaned or stocked with supplies? Did all the parents in the schools have a fair opportunity to fill out that most recent survey about going back to school? Will teachers get the N95 mask that the nurses get? Do you realize that teachers are being told by Sevis, Walgreens and all these other places that we're actually ineligible for the vaccine and they won't schedule appointments? And Marin schools are physically very different than our schools. I'm also wondering if the board realizes that these hand sanitizers are drilled through posters, drilled through whiteboards and things in our classroom and that they're not even paying attention to those details. How can you pay attention to the details of safety and other concerns?
Our next speaker is Lucio Rossi, you may unmute.
Hi, I'm Lucio Rossi. I have two kids in the district, one with an active IEP. I actually have one point of clarification that came from Superintendent Duffy's presentation that was the term bi-weekly for testing. I didn't know if the definition was two times per week or two times per month. I just wanted to figure that out. And then my other, and then I have a comment. And the comment is, speaking kind of extemporaneously here, if the state feels that, or the California Department of Public Health feels that conditioning is all right for students, then why isn't it okay for things like occupational therapy to be done outside for children with special needs? They are both kind of in the same athletic, I mean, I wouldn't consider, you know what I mean, they're not athletic, but they are activities that can occur outside with social distancing. And yet those types of services for special needs children are not being met at the moment. Just a question and a comment at the same time there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jillian Banks Kong, you may unmute.
Hello, everybody again. I live in Richmond. I have two kids in the district. One of them has ADHD, OCD, anxiety and depression. The other one has anxiety. She may very well have ADHD as well, but I have not been able to get her evaluated. She now says that she has social anxiety and this has all, there's been a lot of changes in my children since since the distance learning. I want to stress that I'm trying to come at this with compassion and empathy and listening. I acknowledge that my reality is not everybody's reality. I just want to say that right off the top. But I look to the district to come up with a solution for everybody. And the district, what, what have you been doing to hear Mr. Duffy say, we have not had extensive time to sit down with our bargaining units? It's been a year, a year. Is that not extensive time? Mr. Duffy is saying the current interpretation of the legislation is that money will be available during the summer. He's guessing this. He doesn't know this. He's guessing this. He's risking, he is risking this on his quote interpretation. I'm sorry, I can't take anymore of this. I'm sick of my own voice talking about this. I'm sick of these meetings. I'm sick of all of it. My kids are suffering. Thank you, sorry.
Our next speaker is Don Gosny, you may unmute.
Thank you very much. I appreciated hearing about the, these, what we're doing with the sports, but there were some unanswered questions on there. It seemed to be that we're only competing with our, in our own school district and it does not address what may happen on postseason, like regional championships, like the North Coast section championships or state championships. Almost all the state championships on season one have been canceled, but some of the sports, they still have them on the schedule on CIFstate.org, track and field in particular. Are we going to deny our students the opportunity to compete at a state championship? I know things are changing on a daily basis, but it's just something to be considered. The second thing is, now I was, I got serious concerns when I hear a school board member talking about black and brown bodies on campus as if the rest of the students just don't matter, that they're not on your radar, that this school district is all about black and brown students only. That really concerns me. It's highly offensive. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Juliette Christian Smith, you may unmute. Juliette, looks like she left, so I'm going to move to our next speaker, which is Mrs. Soriana, you may unmute.
Hi. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I just wanted to say that, you know, when we're talking about going back, it doesn't seem like there is an actual plan for class sizes. You have a plan for sports, yet you don't have a plan for the safety of our children in their classrooms. You don't have a plan for the safety of our teachers. I think it's really important that you start sitting down with your unions. You've had a year. I'm an educator as well in OUSD. Things are getting planned out. Things are well organized in a big district like yours. Why can't you prioritize our children? Why are you prioritizing sports instead of children who need occupational therapy and speech like my son, who's in your district? I think at this point, we really need to hurry up and you need to hurry up and leave Duffy, honestly. We need a superintendent here who's gonna do the work and who's gonna prioritize it, our students and our teachers and our community. And who cares and who's from our community? Thank you.
Our next speaker.
Before we go to the next speaker, this is Mr. Phillips. Can you change the view so the board members faces are shown or want the public to know that we are actually listening?
Okay, our next speaker is Zev Marco, man.
Hi, everybody. Um, my name is Zev Marco. I'm a parent in Richmond District. I want to say to the board, first, my English is my first language, so excuse me for not be polite or say the right words. I think the board, the teacher, all of the system that making the decision are lazy. You're only looking out and covered by the COVID-19, how not to do any job. I have two kids with the Zoom like any other parents and I'm calling to all parents to start protesting against this district and to take each one of you out of the chair, feel comfortable chair, for not doing your job. It's ridiculous the way that you're dealing with that a full year without no solutions. Nothing, no outdoor, no indoor, none. It's ridiculous what you're doing. We're here with tears.
So I'm Lud Milam, Zevick's wife. I'm a healthcare worker. If I can go to work every day without PPE, just a cloth mask because my work doesn't provide the PP because we don't get it, the teachers can do it too. Thank God I haven't got COVID because I wash my hands all the time and I keep my mask on. And it's been a year or kids should be doing the same and teachers should go back to classroom.
Our next speaker is Caitlin Henry, you may unmute.
Hi, good evening. My name's Caitlin Henry and I'm the parent of a second grader in the district and I have an incoming kindergartner. We really need to acknowledge the toll that this extended closure is having on the wellness of many of our kids. Until in-person learning is available to all students, I ask that the district provide an optional in-person wellness program on Fridays to all students, following county and state guidelines for safety. After hearing that our athletes have access to in-person wellness through their sports activities, it is imperative that all students should have the opportunity for in-person wellness, including those that are not on sports teams. To those on the board, I realize that you're new in your roles, but your leadership is needed now in the interest of our children and the community. I also want to say that the implications of your decisions or lack of decisions and leadership is going to have an impact on enrollment for next year. At this point, I don't know where my incoming kindergartner will go to school next year. I know a lot of families that are in the same situation and we are families that are huge, huge proponents and advocates for public schools. But the lack of leadership at the district has shown the fact that we are 11 months into the pandemic and we still don't know what the plan is for returning to school has given me serious pause. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Kristy Lovejoy, you may unmute.
Hello, my name is Kristy Lovejoy. I'm a parent of a TK and a second grade student at Alinda Elementary. I appreciate the new board using study sessions to come up with, up to speed and build a consensus that schools can and must reopen with important safety measures in place. The evidence is overwhelming. We can and must return to school. We've learned how other schools have done it safely and now we've just learned that we'd forfeit millions of dollars if we don't open this spring. We cannot wait for a new superintendent. We cannot wait for a comprehensive safety plan. We cannot wait to renegotiate the MOU and we know that waiting is causing harm. And I'm glad to hear that the high school sports are happening. But how about our elementary schools? Why don't we open our outdoor campus spaces, our playgrounds, our fields? Why don't we bring PE back on campus? Why don't we allow after-school programs on grounds like Boys and Girls Club and Y Care? And we really need to start a hybrid or small pilot groups this spring and summer so we can get it right before fall comes around. We need swift, bold reopening action now. Thank you for the opportunity for speaking.
Our next speaker is Alamo Brown, you may unmute.
I love it.
I'd like to say good afternoon, everybody. This is Rodney Alamo Brown. I want to talk about a couple topics this evening, specifically one with the sports analysis that Mr. Booker, Mr. Tashaka laid out. I thought it was very comprehensive. And the reason why I say it was very comprehensive because there's a moniker that now has come about. It's called either the cleats or the streets. And a lot of our young men have chosen the streets because the cleat option is not available. When you look at a young man named Antoine Whitley, who was a member of the Kennedy High School football team, who was apparently missing at this particular junction, when there's no structured activities for young men like him to be participating in, these things seem to ensue. And I would hate for anyone else to be in a predicament such as this. I've been with his parents for the past nine days and I've seen the devastation that's brought upon their faces, knowing the unknowing and what that has brought around. And so I hope that we all come up with a conclusive arrangement to make sure that safety is inside the schools as well as more activities for the children to do, more structured activities at that. Again, I thank you all for being diligent and proceeding in what you've been doing. Keep up the great work. I stand in solidarity with this particular movement and hey, let's work together. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Francisco Ortiz.
Good evening, board members, staff and community. My name is Francisco Ortiz. I'm a first grade teacher at Ford Elementary. I'm here to advocate for a safe and equitable return to face-to-face instruction with a well-articulated plan that involves ample time for educators to be vaccinated as well as vaccination to become readily available to the community to mitigate community spread. According to a recent Pew Research Center report published on February 24th, 80% of black families, 69% of Latinx families, 72% of Asian families and 67% of low-income families are not comfortable sending their students back to face-to-face instruction unless teachers are vaccinated. I'm urging our board members to pop into any Flatland schools and see for themselves how WCCUSD is woefully unprepared to welcome students for face-to-face instruction. I implore you to use your powers as elected officials to protect the best interest of our historically minoritized communities as opposed to folding to political aspirations and pressures that appease white supremacy and privilege. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Jahan Burn, you may unmute.
The presentation tonight demonstrated how much the board and the district have to consider, manage and plan for in the coming months. But the time for listening should really end tonight. It's time for action and implementation. California is 49th out of 50 states in getting kids back to school. New York City is the largest school district in the nation. They're back at school. Oakland and San Francisco are opening soon. When will Wes Contra Costa County? It's unfortunate that such a restrictive MOU with the unions limits the board and district's ability to move forward. I hope that this will change and that under the current language, it could be conceivable that schools won't open until January 2022. Finally, please don't lose focus on what's happening in the Zoom classrooms day to day. Elstrato High School, no class on Fridays. I still don't understand why. Administrators need to audit those classes. There needs to be more intensity and focus by the teachers and students. And there needs to be more bell-to-bell rigor. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Elena Saxonhouse, you may unmute. Elena drops, so our next public speaker is Amy Miles.
Hi there. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I did not intend to speak until Mr. Phillips gave the countdown. So thank you, Mr. Phillips, for encouraging me. I'm the mother of a fifth grader and an eighth grader. I am also a community college English instructor. I'm an educational therapist in training. I'm a member of the school site council and I'm the mother of a child with a 504. And so I understand the complexity of this issue from a very surface level and there's a lot beyond the district's control that I think is important to recognize and also a lot beyond the teacher's control as well. But my question tonight specifically is about the $24 million in federal funds. I'm curious about how this money will get spread across schools. I'm wondering what stakeholders will have a voice and how that money will be spent. And then my other question is really about the rhetoric, which is not unique to this district, about the idea of falling behind its deficit language and, you know, this idea of money for accelerating schools, that doesn't work for everybody. And I hear a lot about talking about minds and bodies being back on campus and I'm especially concerned about our students' hearts and our kids' hearts when they come back to campus and the social emotional love and support they're gonna need to learn how to reengage in a public setting. So I hope we think about that too. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Paula Raffiti, you may unmute.
Hi, everyone. My name is Paula Raffiti and I am a mother of a kindergartner at Vermont Elementary School. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to talk and I have to echo what the mom just spoke about. Really speaking to the socio-emotional aspect that's missing for these children at this time. My daughter is a very social butterfly, but I have to say during the length of this pandemic, it has really impacted her socially and exacerbated her problems related to, you know, her activity level. We've now had to pay for occupational therapy out of our own pockets and also pay for care through the rec center and I've realized we're privileged in that sense and that we can offer her And I've realized we're privileged in that sense and that we can offer her those types of avenues to which she can socialize. And I really think it's unfortunate that it's because we're privileged that we can pay for those things, but others who are not as financially able can't. And so, you know, and I, you know, I'm also a scientist. I sell equipment in the biotech space, some of which includes the testing materials for COVID. And so if we're following the science and I wish, since we started this pandemic, that was the focus is that we also follow the science when looking at how this impacts children and that it doesn't. And the vaccines weren't studied in children and so therefore they wouldn't have to get it. So if we can get our teachers vaccinated and get them back to school safely, so can our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker.
Dr. Wolf, if I may interrupt, they cannot see the sign language interpreter. Can we get somebody to fix that, please? Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Katie Parajon, you may unmute.
Hello, thank you. And so I'm a parent of a second grader in the district. I've listened to the last three study sessions where many experts agreed that we can reopen schools safely if we follow policies of mask-wearing, proper ventilation and social distancing. I believe we need to support the teachers and staff as well. In the previous calls, I've heard the county state that we can vaccinate teachers immediately if they will be willing to go back in person. Many of the neighboring school districts are open or have a plan to open soon. Many schools, both public and private, have been open since August with very little transmission within schools. The data is clear that it's safe to reopen. I don't see a reason why we need to wait until next school year when we still have three and a half months left in this school year. The MOU was written at a time before we had the knowledge about COVID that we have now. We now know we can reopen safely and yet we are held hostage by an outdated MOU that doesn't follow the science. And meanwhile, children are really suffering. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mariella Cuellar, you may unmute.
Hello, um, everybody, community. I am a mother of Richmond High School. My daughter first year is there. I'm torn because I want my daughter to go to school physically, but I know that a lot of schools in our district are not in the conditions to to be in schools because of safety, because if they, the district central office has not planned what it needs to prioritize. And everything, it's about money. For me, it's about health, safety and that we have a plan. I know Richmond High does not compare to El Sarrito High School or Pinole High School. If our community knows Richmond High School and Kennedy High, we don't have windows. There's a lack of ventilation. There's a lot of factors that we don't know. And that's why we always ask for transparency, accountability. And we must come as a community because we know that people living on the hills, like a lot of people say, and we are living on the flatlands. So we need to come together and work together for our safety of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, and I'm going to apologize if I get the name wrong, Mujahidun Sumchai, you may unmute.
Thank you. We are all suffering. It's terrible. We've never gone through anything like this. Superintendent Duffy, you're the lightning rod and I wish I could have replaced you tonight because you should not have been struck. We are all suffering. We're suffering in a way that doesn't allow us to think about what is safe. Period. I'm listening to so many conversations where the word safe is not in it. There's all kinds of things we can blame, but safe needs to be first and foremost. There's a new variant in California that maybe even the vaccines cannot work against. We are not ready to open because we don't have a clear picture of how to get out of this suffering. So we need to slow down, take our times because I would be willing to teach from the grave. How many students do we want to possibly have them learning from the grave? I know principals who are dead right now in New York. I know teachers who are dead right now in New York and all over. We're suffering. I pray that we get through this.
Our next public speaker is Patty Shannon, you may unmute.
Hi, um, I am a teacher in the district. And I also am a mother and a grandmother. I would very much like to be back in school. I teach TK, which is supposed to be hands-on and it has been very challenging finding ways to make it hands-on for my children. And I have worked on that and worked on that, have meetings with parents. And I'm finding something that's working, but it would be better to be in school. But we have limited funds in our district. It's hard to plan on the districts we have. It's hard to plan when we don't know what money we're going to get. Our MOU was based on Harvard, Harvard Global Health Institute's science standards based on peer review studies. Our schools lack the staffing. We lack the supplies. We lack the necessary things to be put in place to open safely. Until we get those, it's not a safe, it's not safe for us to open. Three children in my family have had COVID. Two of my students have had COVID.
We need to make sure tonight, we have a lot of people who need to speak. So, Mr. Wolf, we need to make sure that we stay with the time limits, okay?
Certainly. Next public speaker is Natasha Benjamin, you may unmute.
Hi, my name is Natasha Benjamin. I'm a parent of a seventh and ninth grader in the district. My, both my kids have transformed over the last year from happy kids to struggling and failing their classes. My ninth grader is depressed and recently started cutting himself. His anxiety makes distance learning very difficult. My seventh grader has lost all motivation for school and learning. The isolation for teenagers is brutal and I know I'm not alone. This is not okay. After almost a year of no in-person school and no plan by our district, I am frustrated. You have a better plan for starting sports than how to reopen elementary schools in our district and for the children that are most in need. Many, many other districts have started to reopen and have a plan. Why is this district so behind? If this is about the MOU with the teachers and then as a board, you have to tell us this and be transparent. If, are we going to open in the spring with a hybrid model for those in need, for our youngest members that we know Zoom doesn't work for? We know this is not about the science at this point. We need to get the teachers vaccinated now so we, so we can get back to school. There's no reason why we can't open full-time in the fall if the teachers are vaccinated. This board must show leadership and renegotiate the MOU with the teachers now. Things are very different than last June. We have the knowledge on how to open safely. Please stop talking and please do something about this for our.
Thank you. The next public speaker is Ellen Bayou, you may unmute.
Hi, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. I just wanted to say, you know, I think a lot of people are saying athletics, come on. And I just want to say, great for athletic students. They have an opportunity to come and interact with other young people. You know, for every student in this district, every day is an away game and that's just not okay. I have a daughter in kindergarten at Harding and online kindergarten is not a substitute for kindergarten. She takes after me in so many ways. She looks like her dad, but she's, needs that social interaction like I do. And she also is a very anxious child like I am and that anxiety manifests in her gut. And so when we had that emergent closure, she really regressed actually and started having like bathroom accidents in the nighttime, which she's never had any bathroom accidents in her life. And it was because she was, we wasn't interacting with other children and it was highly stressful for her. And we've only really been surviving because we have a pod of students. But I'm an educator myself and to be available for my students, it takes all of me. I basically am averaging four or five hours a night and I can't persist like this. I've had so much friction with my daughter and just trying to be a professional person. If you want to cloak yourselves in the argument of equity, I think we have different definitions of equity. Equity is finding solutions that matter that help a student get to an achievement level, each student. And right now we're fully closed and that's not happening for all students and we need to reopen schools.
Our next speaker is Maria Calderon. And I'll remind folks that you need to have a name to be allowed to speak. Maria Calderon, you're the next speaker. Our next speaker is going to be Evan Miller. Evan Miller, you may unmute.
Hi, thanks so much for hosting these listening sessions. I'm a parent of two children in the district and approached reopening schools with some skepticism. But I've been really pleased with the study sessions and listening sessions the board has provided. And I really feel like all of the evidence that I've heard so far has really been overwhelmingly that we need to stop this experiment of remote distance learning and get kids back into school. I think it's really important for, for all the children in our community. And it seems like overwhelmingly the evidence is pointing to a return to school. I think we need to start laying those plans now. It's going to take some work, but I think we need to start working together to make those plans and get everyone on board so that we can try something out this spring and so that we're not trying to reinvent this wheel in the fall. We need to start working now and the board and the superintendent need to communicate that clearly to show what steps are being made to address the valid concerns that the teachers have, that the parents have and the students have. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maria Calderon. You may unmute. Okay, our next speaker is Jeff Pollock. You may unmute.
Thank you, board, for taking my comment. I've been teaching on the South Side of Richmond since 1998 at John F. Kennedy High School. I'm also a coach and an advocate for those black and brown students that were brought up earlier in our conversation. I hope the board will reach out to our athletes and make a safe return. But I'm very concerned about the equity and the resources at the, at the different campuses. That's already been discussed. I just want, want to make you aware that as a coach, that has an impact. I know our students are struggling. I know our communities are struggling. I know we can find a way through this. I appreciate you taking the opportunity to discuss this issue and look forward to our return to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gail Tajimoto Cho. You may unmute. And our last public speaker from this round that was up when we started is Kealan Hunter. You may unmute. Hearing no others there, that will conclude this round of public comment.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wolf. Public tonight is designed for us to listen to you. There will not be board discussion on this item or this issue tonight. But we will talk about when board discussion is to come before this meeting is over. That said, we're going to move to item D1.
President Phillips, I have a point of order. Is there a way that we can tonight make sure that we're checking in with the ASL interpreter and see if she needs a break? We may not need a break because we're not speaking or asking questions, but she may need a break because she is working during this.
We actually have a team of two interpreters, but thank you for checking. We do really appreciate that. We've been doing 15 on, 15 off.
Thank you so much for letting me know. Sorry to interrupt President Phillips. I just wanted to be sure.
Thank you very much. The next item on the list is D1, which is reports on COVID-19 in schools. The last section that we had was important. I think everyone called in. I want to make sure that the board members are, that were present. And so what I was going to do is ask the board members if it's okay, we take a five-minute recess before we begin the next, the next item. So.
Oh, is that what I was supposed to do? So moved, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you so much. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. So it's been properly moved and seconded to take a five-minute recess. When we get back, we will be on item D1, okay? So on to the vote. Ms. Smith Foles.
Smith Foles, yes.
Mr. Christian.
Christian, yes.
Mr. Gonzalez Way.
Gonzalez Way, yes.
Mrs. Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Mr. Leon.
Leon, yes.
Ms. Emiliano.
Emiliano, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So the motion, Phillips, yes, the motion carries. We're on recess until 7:40. Thank you. We have one more person that we're waiting for and then we'll get going. Thank you very much. The entire board is back. As we proceed in this meeting, because this meeting is going to be long, I just want to remind the board, if you do need to interrupt, if you don't have the floor and you need to interrupt, the way to do it is to call for a point of privilege, point of order. You could appeal a ruling of the chair, call for orders of the day, which is for us to get back on track. And you could withdraw a motion. There are going to be no motions tonight, but remember it's point of privilege, point of order. You want to appeal a ruling of the chair, which is me. Call for orders of the day, which is to get back on track. That's not easy to remember. So if you say point of order, I'll work with you regardless of what it is, you know. So you, but you make your point of order, then you wait to be recognized by the chair. You don't just start talking in the meeting. So that's just a reminder for everybody, the parliamentary procedure, okay? We're going to move on to D1, which is reports on COVID-19 in schools. We have invited five parent groups that are recognized by our district in some form or fashion to be able to have 10 minutes apiece to say what they need to say around COVID-19 and schools. And we have invited our five bargaining units to do the same. So that's where we are right now. And moving on to item D1, our first set of speakers is ASAT. And they're up now and they have 10 minutes. Dr. Wold, please run the timer. Everyone, it is very important that we stay in the time limits.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Mister, can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Board. Thank you, guys. Thank everybody for coming. My name is Zalon Harrison. I am the, I'm on the ASAT Executive Committee of the District and I also am a parent and I have two children in the district, one at Richmond High, one at Lake. And I am here tonight speaking as the A-PAC lead. And we have reached out to our black and African-American parents in the district and have taken a survey on what they feel it would be like for to come back in person. What were some of their concerns? What were some of their fears and just how that would look for us? And I just want to let you guys know, we thank you for not overlooking black students and their parents during this time and really giving opportunity to hear our voice. It was a short notice, so we didn't get it out to all our parents, but we did get it out to a nice chunk of our parents. And we will be giving it to, you know, let, let parents have opportunity to also do it that didn't get a chance to do it. So we can let the board know more feedback from the parents and their concerns. So tonight, LaShante will be sharing with you what the parents' feedback was from our survey that we took. So I'll turn it over to LaShante. Thank you.
Thank you, Zalon. Good evening, Board members. My name is LaShante Smith and I am the African-American site advisory team secretary. I have a daughter who is in sixth grade and is a student at Hercules Middle School. So as Zalon already shared, we did a survey and administered this survey to our African-American site advisory teams. We did receive the information late and so we tried to get as many respondents as we could in the short timeframe. So right now I'm going to review our survey results with you all. So we had 230 respondents and out of those 230 respondents, we had approximately 60% of the respondents who said that they were not comfortable with returning to school in spring. I'm going to give you some quotes from parents regarding their concerns. Quote, "This is not a normal school setting we're going back to, and most students want to return to socialize and get back to some type of normality." End quote. Another quote, "How do guidelines fit in? How are teachers, principals, counselors, coaches, site supervisors, office staff? How are they going to enforce guidelines without expecting some pullback from students?" Quote, "Optimistically, yes, everyone wants to get back to some type of normal lifestyle, but reality situations that could have been handled in a more traditionalized way are not going to work moving forward." End quote. "How will these situations be handled differently for the students? Will our staff now be more empathetic towards students if issues arise? There has to be a balance, but in favor of the succession for all students, because enough has been taken away from them, especially for the ones who had to graduate during this pandemic." End quote. Quote, "This is a time to start fresh and new. I just hope the public school system that has failed its students enough in Contra Costa County does things right this time around." Further, parents expressed a need that there must be things in place for a safe return to school. 56.9% of parents discussed the need for vaccinations. Not only vaccinations for teachers, but also the need for community vaccination. 42% of our families said that they would only feel safe if everyone were to have the vaccine. Also, parents' comments included the need for plans for parents who are not comfortable with the vaccine. We know that prior vaccinations have disproportionately affected black communities. And so there has to be a plan in place for those who do not want to take the vaccine. Vaccination for staff should be available, but not a requirement. And all staff should have vaccinations, all staff should have access to vaccinations before a school reopening. Teachers should be prioritized to have vaccinations so that they feel comfortable returning to school. More time is what another parent expressed. More time in really learning about the vaccines and the impact the vaccines can have on children. A large majority of our parents also discussed the need for testing and in a testing protocol to be in place. What will asymptomatic asymptomatic testing look like for students and staff? Will there be rapid onsite testing? How frequent will we do tests for COVID? How can we ensure that all children and staff who want a test for COVID-19 receive tests? What do we, what will we do to provide resources for families so that they can access COVID tests onsite if they choose to? And will we have any type of protocol for asymptomatic testing for staff on a weekly basis? Other parent comments included the need, included a concern and a need to be addressed that COVID is not over and they don't want to risk their kids catching it. There also needs to be notifications to parents of COVID positive results. And what will it look like for a protocol to be established for students who are sick because of COVID? What will the quarantine period look like? Other plans that were noted, approximately 32% of our students or of our families surveyed said that social distancing, social distancing protocols need to be in place. Parent comments a need for a social distancing plan for the students. Implementation of this plan and to really feel safe about social distancing on playgrounds and common areas. Social distancing during lunch breaks and also social distancing during recess. Approximately 40% of parents commented on a need for cleaning cleaning protocols. What will the safety plan be for cleaning? It seems somewhat disorganized and disjointed. Plans for a cohesive plan that can guarantee masking and social distancing, tracing protocols and, and other protocols in, in place for possible exposure to COVID. What will it look like to check temperatures before entering the school grounds? How will the safety procedures be communicated? What will be the plan to transition back to distance learning so there's not a further disruption of students' education should there have to be a quarantine at a school site? And then what are the plans for parents who are just not comfortable sending their students back to school? This plan should be include, the plan should include equitable cleaning and health precautions for students and staff. And then there needs to be a real plan regarding exposure, exposure to sick teachers, exposure to other students. How do we, how can we fully ensure that all safety guidelines are followed? There were other comments around classrooms and attendance. How do we make sure that the classrooms are truly smaller? How do we have alternative schedules and that we can have students outside as much as possible? How many students will be in the classroom? We shouldn't have more than 10 students in a class. There isn't enough staff currently to uphold the distance and the contact between students. We need to have more teachers, teachers aides and tutors to support our students. We also need to have a protocol and a discipline policy for sick staff or kids who refuse to follow policies at school. And what will that protocol look like? Approximately 63% of our respondents commented around PPE and having that available for students and parents. Disposable mask on hands for students, parents and adults. And then how can we guarantee that smaller children will be monitored closely to keep their mask on at all times? Again, there was many comments around sanitation and cleaning. Is the district going to hire more cleaning staff? How will we ensure that there's enough cleaning supply for our classrooms? How will we ensure that all of our school sites have equitable access to cleaning staff? We know that all of our schools are not created the same. So how do we ensure that our school sites are actually sanitized and held up to the standards that are recommended by CDE? When will we have public schedules on when classes will be cleaned? And will there be an explanation to parents how this cleaning will be increased during the day and try in high traffic areas like restrooms and lunchrooms?
Just about a minute left in the 10 minutes.
Thank you. So further comments just included the need for student and staff protection. We wanted to end with saying that there are many conversations with valid opinions around school reopening. And there's conversations about what's best for students, particularly black students. But we meet, we need to make sure that we are speaking with our black families rather than for our black families. We need to take this time to redefine the purpose and examine our current practices in our educational system. We must not rush back to normal. We have to remember that normal was not working for our black students and families. So what lessons will we learn from this time? What are we willing to truly invest in and change for our black students and families? And how do we work together to create a new approach to schooling? What do we truly desire for our students? We have to make sure that we do this right and we don't return to what was already not working. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, those comments. Do we have a timer that we can use for the 10 minutes? If not, I'm just going to do 10 minutes on my phone to make sure that everybody has the same amount of time.
We are working on it, President Phillips.
Okay, so let's start on the next one. When they begin, I'll hit the 10-minute timer on my phone. And then when you guys get the stuff figured out on how to do it on the screen, we'll move to that. So the next group is Bayside, that was quick. The next group is Bayside Council of PTA.
I'm sorry to interrupt, President Phillips. I think they wanted to share a slide deck, so I don't know if we could, we can't share a deck and a timer.
So I'm going to do it on my phone and then you all can let them share their screen. And when they start, I'll start the time. So if you could pull it up.
Christina, you can, you can share your screen or would you rather I pull it up?
Um, whatever's easiest for you. I think if you did it, it would be probably look cleaner on Zoom. But if it's easier, I can share my screen too. Should we just do that?
I think so.
Oh, I'm game.
Go ahead. Okay, I'm, I'm starting your time now.
All right. My name is Christina Velazquez Fiddler. I am a parent at Miravista School and I'm sorry, I'm trying to get this to view correctly. There we go. I have two daughters, one in fourth grade and one in, I'm sorry, one in fifth grade. Holy cow. She's in fifth grade and another one in third grade. Thank you for your time and thank you for inviting the Bayside Council of PTAs. We serve West Contra Costa County as well as John Swett Unified School Districts. So again, really happy that you invited us. So the California State PTA has adopted 10 recommendations for, for schools reopening. And I'm going to go through these because this PTA stands for Parent Teacher Association. It is a unique group in that we work together to come to these kinds of agreements. So number one, coordinating efforts. The legislature and the governor must agree on a coordinated approach to reopening schools as quickly as safely as possible. Number two, equitable sufficient funding. There must be sufficient funding to cover the additional costs related to opening schools in person and it must be equitable. All students should generate the same base funding grant with an LCFF adjustment that recognizes the impacts of the pandemic on disadvantaged students. Opening schools will require social emotional support for students and staff and services to meet students and families' needs, including safe transportation for students. Funding to pay for testing, vaccines, contact tracing and other COVID-related health costs should not be from Proposition 98 funds. Every Proposition $98 spent on non-instructional cost is one less dollar to educate our children. Number four, the governor, the legislature and the local governments must prioritize vaccinations for school staff, early childhood educators and childcare staff, especially those who are already working in person. Number five, school districts must provide opportunities for robust input and feedback as they prepare and execute reopening plans. They must ensure parents representing the diversity of the community are included in decision-making. Parents and families should be able to choose whether a child returns to school in person depending on the health of the child and their family situation. Number seven. Number seven. Support the mental health and wellbeing of our students and staff by providing adequate resources to support their individual needs. To protect student health and wellbeing, middle schools should not start before eight AM. And high schools before eight thirty AM. Number eight. After-school, summer school and childcare programs need to be available, fully funded and coordinated with the school day. All schools should develop programs to address learning loss and meet the needs of the whole child. Number nine. Schools should not open in person unless it is safe for students and staff. School districts should adhere to the requirements set forth by the California State Department of Public, Public Health. And county health departments regarding the reopening of schools. In a realistic timeline, any timeline for reopening of schools should consider the needs of parents and teachers. And respect the most accurate health guidelines. This includes making sure the school facility is safe for reopening. Since the start of the pandemic, the governor and the superintendent of public instruction. Have included the California State PTA in discussions dealing with the pandemic. This includes representation on the Community Vaccine Advisory Committee. The School Reopening Task Force, Statewide Testing Plans Committee, as well as meetings with state officials. PTA held statewide listening sessions to gather the thoughts of parents throughout the state. On pandemic-related issues. And we continue to hear from parents, students and teachers across California. Schools need to open as soon as practically possible while protecting the health and wellbeing of students, staff and families. California students are counting on the legislature and the governor to come up with a realistic school reopening plan. That meets the needs of all of our school communities. These ten recommendations were adopted by the California State PTA Board of Managers on February twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Um, yeah, thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Uh, if you send the superintendent the slide deck and thank you for putting it on the slide too. Uh, but if you send the superintendent the slide deck, uh, he will make sure that it goes to the entire board. Okay?
That's great. Thank you. I'll paste them in for our, um, viewers as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, we're going to.
President Phillips, you are muted.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to the next group. I don't know what point that would have been, a point of order or so. I don't know. It is a point of, I can't hear you. Um, so the next, uh, group that we're gonna move on to is, uh, the CAC. Uh, which, uh, represents our special ed, uh, population. And we have ten minutes for them as well. Uh, when they are on, uh, we will begin. Are you ready to go, CAC?
President Phillips, I, they, the, the representatives could not join us tonight. But the representatives from the, the LCAP committee, Ms. Shakira Reynolds, Reynolds. Said that they were gonna wrap it into their presentation.
We did a shared survey, so I don't need their time, but I will share the results of our survey that included their members.
So everybody has ten minutes, so if you can do all of that in ten minutes, that's fine.
No problem.
And when you're ready, I'm gonna hit the timer to start. You ready?
Uh, give me two seconds. All right, I am ready.
All right, go.
Good evening, Board Trustees, Superintendent Duffy, District Staff, Teachers, Union Members and Community. I'm Shakira Williams Reynolds. I'm the Chair of the DL Caps Committee. Which is the Advisory Committee on LCAP Funding for WCCUSD. And I'm here tonight to give remarks regarding the parent perspective on the possibility of reopening schools. Um, and including a report from a survey that we did for DL Caps and CAC. Which is the Community Advisory Committee on Special Education. I am proudly from the South Side of Richmond, a current West County resident and a product of Richmond Unified School District. I am also the mother of two special needs children, a former teacher, a parent leader. And a member of CAC as well as ASAT, and I was also a member of the Reopening Task Force. When the parent advisory committee chairs were asked late Monday morning to be here this evening to share the perspective of our committees. I wondered how we would manage that when we, when ASAT was the only committee that had any meetings this week. And I also wondered why we were asked so late with so little time to prepare meaningful input. We wondered why parents, students, staff and union members weren't included on the panel of experts during this process. Are we not also experts in what we are currently experiencing on our schools and our children? But in spite of that, I sought to gather as much information from my committee. As I could and also from the other parent advisory committees. So I created a survey and the Chair and Co-Chair of NDAC translated it. And we asked for assistance from community engagement to assist with distribution to all the committee members. Imagine our dismay when our survey was shared by principals. On social media with new wording that did not explain that it was for committee members only. Also by word of mouth, by teachers, um, with all sorts of rumors to the. The source of the survey as well as the intent. And we've even heard it mentioned this evening. But reading is fundamental and I wish people had noticed that the email came from LCAP. And the opening of the survey and the attached letter said hello committee members. That said, what started as a survey for maybe about sixty people on the district's official parent advisory committees. Has over five hundred responses since one PM yesterday, including accusations of us being sneaky, biased and dishonest. This turn of events, the survey results and this whole process has revealed some important truths. Too many adults in our community don't know how to disagree without being disagreeable. In the absence of concrete plans, we can easily descend into chaos. We claim to value diversity and equity, but those who are used to being in positions of privilege and power. Dislike being challenged and seek to elevate their experiences and voices above all others. And instead of dialogue, we too often decide to take the low road of refusing to hear each other. Mocking others for their beliefs or fears and refusing to compromise. But still, in the spirit of compromise, I would like to share our complete survey results. There were a total of four hundred and sixty-six responses to the English survey and ninety responses to the Spanish version. The Spanish results will be discussed by the MDEC chair, so the following information is based on the English survey results only. More than eighty percent of survey respondents were not members of any parent advisory committee. So they were parents from the community who got the survey from various means. Forty-two point three percent of respondents said they would not be comfortable with their children returning to in-person schooling by spring. Between now and June. Thirty-five point two percent of respondents said they would be comfortable with their children returning to in-person schooling in the spring. Twenty-one point six percent said maybe they would be comfortable with their children returning to school, but they needed more information. Of those responding, maybe the majority, seventy point seven percent, said they would like to see specific site-based plans. Over seventy-two percent said they would like to see plans for social distancing and class size reductions. And sixty-three point nine percent would like to see plans for how facility issues will be addressed at sites where distancing. Open airflow, et cetera, are difficult. Forty-two point nine percent of respondents would like specific equity plans. So historically underserved schools can be fully prepared to safely host students. Of those responding, no, the majority said they would be comfortable with their children returning to in-person schooling in fall twenty twenty-one. And just under five percent said they would be comfortable in summer twenty twenty-one. Thirty-six point five percent said they would be comfortable when our county is in the yellow tier. Just under thirteen percent would be comfortable when staff is fully vaccinated. And sixteen percent would be comfortable when vaccines are available for children. Of the additional comments, I'd like to lift the following either because they occurred often or because they were unduplicated. I think going home at lunch would be perfect. The afternoon could be to work independently. I'm not comfortable with my child eating at school. Do not make more stress on the teachers. They should not be made to teach both online and in person. Plan a hybrid model. This should have been planned for in the past few months to be ready to implement. At this point, it's disappointing to see that no plans have been put together at all. I do not believe that last-minute surveys about such important topics are all that useful. Also, if the intention is to better support all learners. Wouldn't it be best to have individualized surveys sent to each family and caregiver similar to enrollment? So that information could be used in some fashion other than to simply say that you surveyed parents? Allow parents and teachers to sign up for those that want to return to campus. And those parents and teachers that still want online can do so. When they are allowed back, do a soft opening, half of the school on Monday and Wednesday and the other half Tuesday and Thursday. And on Fridays, do a deep cleaning, maybe even half the class every other day to allow for better social distancing. Teachers need vaccines, schools need proper PPE and other supplies that haven't been implemented. Funds are limited already, so how is any of this possible? Kids that needed to go back were supposed to go first and all kids. Again, there's no actual plan set in place. You need to listen to the concerns of black and brown families. Make a plan for getting all teachers vaccinated, increase ventilation in schools and make class sizes much smaller. Overhaul the whole system and expect it to look very different from before the pandemic. Will schools that are able to meet the requirements to reopen be able to do so even though other schools in the district cannot? I'd like outdoor school to be an option. I feel that if educators are vaccinated, outdoor school could be a safe option. I'm hoping that students can at least attend school for partial days in small groups. Many safety requirements were not adhered to prior to the pandemic. Specifically fire and earthquake drills, campus cleanliness, how can I be assured that can't, that COVID safety protocols will be adhered to? I'm very concerned about how the district plans to address any deviations from the plan. Rather that's an air filter breaking or non-compliant student or staff. In closing, when our schools first closed, our parent advisory committees raised a number of issues that could have been addressed long before now. We asked questions in January and we are asking them again tonight. Not because we are against reopening, but because we are for equity and against inaction. Some of the questions we raised were how will learning loss be addressed? Particularly for black English language learner and special education students who have suffered the most during the school closure. What specific targeted services will be in place to support these students and how will their success be measured? How will funds be allocated to sites to purchase the necessary resources, supplies, PPE and create and update safety plans? Will vaccinations be required? How will health and safety of students and staff be prioritized? Many people have had traumatic experiences during the school closure. How will the mental health of students, staff and families be centered in the reopening plans? What happens if and when there's a case of COVID nineteen or death at a site? Will there be testing, contact tracing, mental health services? How will this process be done equitably considering the state of some school sites? Including improper ventilation, large class sizes and inadequate staffing. And we also asked a question about systems for families who don't want to return, which will be addressed by the virtual school. The expectation is not that we will get these answers tonight, but we hope it is clear that we do need to do something now. We had the time and opportunity to avoid being where we are. Parents' input was sought at the last minute when the district is in crisis. Even though we have lifted our voices numerous times in a variety of ways, we are not considered the experts nor qualified to be decision-makers. We've completed hundreds of surveys, asked specific questions and made concrete suggestions. I'll be done. Where is the plan? Give us the concrete, site-based, equitable student-centered plan. Reassure us that our concerns have been addressed and I'm sure there will be more buy-in to reopening. By a larger, more diverse group of students and I'm complete.
Thank you very much. Um, and that was almost perfect. You could hear the timer going off on the phone. All right, so we're gonna move on to the next, uh, group. Well, that was DL Cap. Um, so we're gonna move to, uh, MDAC, uh, next. And. They usually do a dual presentation. Is that happening tonight?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, um, when you tell me to go, I'm gonna hit, go.
Erica, tu le dices? Si, hola, muy buenas tardes a todos. Soy Erica Cruzes, este, pertenezco al distrito de West Contra Costa. Uh, somos, somos madres, verdad, que tenemos hijos de aprendices de inglés. Y junto con mi compañera Stephanie, estamos aquí para presentar lo que, este. Uh, arrojaron ciertos encuestas, verdad, que hicimos rápidamente y con poco tiempo. Ahora quisiera preguntar algo. Cuántos de ustedes no están entendiendo absolutamente nada de lo que estoy diciendo yo? Cuántos de ustedes entienden más o menos, eh, mi idioma? Cuántos de ustedes dicen, ¿por qué nada más está moviendo la boca? Bueno, así nos sentimos muchos papás. Nos sentimos muchos papás porque no nos podemos expresar, porque no hay una información. Y es el deseo de muchos papás como yo, que nos entiendan, que nos comprendan. Ahora voy a hacer una pequeña pausa. Porque creo que a lo mejor muchos de los que nos están escuchando no entienden lo que yo quiero decir. Lo único que quiero comentarles es que. Como papás como yo, nos sentimos solos. Porque mucha información que nos están brindando está nada más en inglés. Mucha información que nos están brindando, no la entendemos y no la comprendemos. Que muchas gracias a todos. Stephanie, creo que vas a continuar tú.
So good evening, board members. My name is Stephanie Saketa. I am a mom of four within school, uh, within WCCUSD. Though I have two students that have reclassified, one that's still in middle school and the process of reclassifying. And the incoming kindergarten student. Um, currently right now, we would have been pleased to present any kind of data in representing our MDAC committee. Unfortunately, we just got this notification Monday and we did not have any MDAC committee meetings coming up soon. Um, and even though we would want to get you as much data from our fellow parents. Unfortunately, most schools, as most principals would know, our ELAX aren't up and functioning. And so we don't have membership at our MDAC committee as well. So that's another thing that we would love to see in a virtual setting that our ELAX, even though we're in a virtual setting, can begin to be established. And I hope our board can hold them accountable to that. In regards to this survey, I think Ms. Shakira Reynolds, as I serve on the vice chair as the DL Caps Committee. She pretty much summed up everything that we presented in regards to our survey. This was done pretty much last minute. Uh, if you can see the data that she presented. Most of the respondents were not members of our committee. So that means most of our respondents were members that do not serve or have any students that have certain needs. Uh, in regards to distance learning. I wanted to bring back, and this is based on a survey that we took back in October of twenty twenty. Which is what we call the reopening survey. And again, I want to highlight that we had nine hundred and sixty-two respondents back then. Out of those nine hundred and sixty-two respondents, four hundred and sixty-two were parents that did not have students that have high needs. So again, if we're going to continue to look at how we plan to reopen schools, I believe that asking. We understand that parents within the hills have social emotional learning loss. I mean, social and emotional where they're suffering, they, they, they're not out and about socially. But what's going on with our students in the flatlands right now? What's going on with our students that aren't being taught, that are missing? Have we outreach? What are the, what are we? What are we doing to make sure that our parents that really don't understand English, that have not understood how to support their students? Provide more access to them. We need to reimagine how we're providing these services and unfortunately, really, no one is reaching out to these parents. Uh, that nine to five isn't working when most of our parents are working double shifts to try to provide income for our families. Some of our high school students are working to provide food for the table as well. So we really need to start thinking of how we're providing better services during distance learning. And if we're going to reimagine, how do we open schools again? What are we doing to provide services for those students that unfortunately right now are uninsured? So can't get healthcare. If they do get sick, where are they going to? Who is providing that accessible health for them? So we really need to reimagine how we're thinking about opening instead of just like how will the classroom look like? Well, what goes beyond leaving the classes? What happens once our students leave? Who are they being, coming in touch with? Who is babysitting them? Who is providing food and other services that they were, are really in need of?
Erica, no sé si hay algo más que quiera terminar.
No, no sé escuchar lo que me dijiste al último. ¿Quieres que termine con algo?
Combinado, culminando con la, la, el, la hoja que habías escrito.
Okay, no sé cuántos, no sé si están traduciendo en inglés, verdad, para los demás personas. Pero, eh, básicamente, del, de. Pero básicamente de los datos que nos dieron. Oh, sí, sí me escuchan. Perfecto, qué bueno. Ahora queremos encontrar, hay tantos desafíos, verdad, que ha provocado que nuestros hijos estén tomando su educación de modo virtual. Por esta pandemia, que está fuera de nuestras manos, lo sabemos. Quiero recordarles que nuestras juntas y varios padres, o sea, que varios padres estuvimos. Siempre estamos al pendiente de nuestros niños, especialmente los aprendices de inglés. No quiere decir que no estamos al pendiente de todos los niños, pero estamos ahorita enfocándonos por todos esos niños que tienen ese problema, no ese problema, porque es un gran beneficio ser aprendiz de inglés. Pero que ellos necesitan ese apoyo que el distrito debería de dar. Porque bien la pandemia nos ha hecho que nos movamos y cambiamos muchas cosas de nuestros trabajos cotidianos. No podemos dejar de destacar la importancia de luchar y hablar con los más vulnerables y por los estudiantes de mayor necesidad. No sin importar que todos, absolutamente todos, merecen tener y llevar una educación de calidad y con equidad. Tuvimos la oportunidad, como ya les habían dicho, de los resultados, verdad, de dárselos. Pero fue tan poco tiempo. Hay mucha información que los papás están mencionando y nos gustaría darles esos datos, verdad? Porque hay tantas necesidades, entonces escuchen lo que cada uno de nosotros nos están diciendo y escuchen lo que los papás nos están diciendo. Tenemos miedo, pero hay muchos que quieren regresar, obviamente, verdad, necesitamos activarnos. Entonces tenemos que poner las mejores decisiones de los expertos y también las mejores necesidades de los papás. Y también muchísimas gracias también por invitarnos en este momento.
Mrs. Shakara, is Mrs. Cruzes closing it out or are you closing it out?
She just closed it up.
Okay, alright, thank you very much. And just so everyone knows, the board does have the ability to hear translation as well. So when, so we are listening, even if we don't know the language that you are speaking in. So thank you so much for that. We are going to move to our bargaining units. And so the the first bargaining unit that is up is Adult School Teachers United. Are they here?
So Mr. Phillips, all the unions are going to make a combined presentation.
Okay.
That will have a chance to to speak within the slideshow that we have.
So, but just so I know, is there actually a representative from ASTU here?
Yes.
Okay.
Kristen Persley from ASTU.
There should be a representative from every union here.
Okay, so we got ASTU, we got Local 21.
Yes.
We got eight fifty-six. I can't see all the faces. Okay, and UTRIC, Ms. Glidden, President Glidden. And then I know WCCC is Mr. Deleon. So you guys got fifty minutes for the public, just so you know. I gave the groups the ability to use their ten minutes separately if they wanted or to combine their time. So I gave the parent groups that option. And I gave the bargaining units that option. They're choosing to do fifty minutes, so that's why their presentation is going to be longer. But overall, it's going to be the same period of time. So Mr. Deleon, you tell me to go, I'm gonna hit the button.
If Mr. Jordan, can you put up the slideshow?
Yes. Okay, I'm hitting the button.
Good evening, WCCUSD Board Superintendent Duffy and School Communities. I'm Jose Deleon and it's my pleasure to open tonight's presentation regarding returning to school for in-person instruction. The representatives of the unions and associations that support the education of our students are taking this opportunity to be collaborative with you, school board members and Superintendent Duffy, to work towards common grounds. The unions and associations will discuss challenges and opportunities in this work. The unions and associations that are being represented tonight are the following. Could you go to the next slide, please? So we have five unions and associations in this district. West Contra Costa Administrators Associations, which will include the principals, vice principals and coordinators and instructional specialists in the central office. UTR is the Teachers Association, which are the classroom teachers, academic coaches, nurses, counselors, psychologists, speech and language pathologists and other certificate staff. SSA will be our classified managers, IT, payroll, HR staff, office managers and other classified supervisors. Like custodians
Ellie, brush your teeth.
And coordinator workers in the classified area. Also, the Teamsters, which are custodians, classmates, food service, campus and security, occupational therapists and other frontline staff. And of course, we have ASTU, which is our association for teachers of adult education. This group is here to work collaborative, to help plan moving forward. At this time, I'd like to introduce UTR Representative Glidden that will state our goals for this presentation.
Thank you so much. And if you go to the next slide, please. Thank you. And as Mr. Deleon said, I'm Marissa Glidden. I'm a third grade teacher from Verdi Elementary School on release, serving as president of United Teachers of Richmond. And all five bargaining units came together because we are so eager to go back to our school buildings. We miss our students and we cannot wait for the day where we are all back together again. We are eager to work together to create a plan that emphasizes health, safety and equity. We know that any plan to return to school buildings should meet the needs of all of our students. This means the district needs to meaningfully and deeply engage with the people who directly serve their students. A one-size plan, it will not work. It will not fit for all, especially in these times. So we are eager to come together to leverage our collective experience, to be creative and to design something that really works. We are thankful for the opportunity to be here. This is the first opportunity that all of the bargaining units have had to address these concerns to the school board and we really appreciate the moment. So as we go through, we're going to talk about some of the considerations and planning for a safe return. I'm going to pass that to the Teamsters representative.
Thank you, Ms. Glidden. Good evening. My name is Jeanette Bradfield, Teamsters Local Eight Five Six representative for classified staff at WCCUSD. Our membership is sixteen hundred employees and approximately a hundred and two classifications. Our members work at every campus and office building and they touch every aspect of the inner workings throughout this district. We do want to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to address them and the community this evening. We do stand in solidarity with other union brothers and sisters to communicate why a robust safety plan is our number one priority, not only for the members we represent, but every person who we come into contact with during the course of the day. Please know, we are not opposed to reopening schools. We do, however, insist that the district staff communicate with all employee groups jointly, so we can address every scenario. It is crucial that all bargaining units are aware of each other's needs and how this might impact one another. Local emergencies are not new to the district. There have been smoke days, torrential rains, electrical outages and chemical emergencies. Whether or not we came out of these emergencies successfully depended on how stakeholders communicated with each other. Let's take a look back to March and April 2020. Employees were sent home. There was no work for a few weeks and while employees watched the news in horror of the growing pandemic. The district then reached out to employees to come back to work. Union representatives and their members were invited to attend meetings for a safe reopening while the rest of the community was shut down. We met for months in Zoom meeting after Zoom meeting to carve out plans to put in place to begin distance learning. Response plans and schedules were set in place for social distancing. When the employees returned, it was evident from day one that although the broad strokes were in place. The district staff met their goal to inform the public that we have a plan. It was not adequate because it did not take into consideration the finite details of each classification. Food service returned and have worked tirelessly to distribute millions of meals to the community in the heat, wind, smoke and cold rainy days. Custodians have had to completely rework their entire schedule to meet the demands and accommodate extra cleaning and sanitizing. PPE shortages existed at alarming rates and the maintenance department could not provide safety barriers fast enough. School sites became overgrown with vegetation during closure. When the grounds employees came back, their focus was weed abatement on the hillsides in the summer, wearing a mask. CSOs were scheduled to provide crowd control for food distribution sites and safety checks to all district properties. Fast forward to today, the final week of February 2021. Now the expectation is to reopen schools. While it may be the opinion of some people that employees don't want to return, our members tell us that they just want to feel safe. Last year's plans must be reworked to include all employee groups jointly. Teams should be designed to think of every aspect of what a classification might encounter at a work site. From principals, office staff, libraries, custodians, grounds, maintenance, CSOs, food services and now in-class paraprofessionals. While many classifications can socially distance, paraprofessionals will be face-to-face with students on the bus and in the classroom. Other support staff enter the classroom for therapies and lessons and parents may want to visit from time to time. Now that discussions are ramping up about opening schools, members are asking about safety protocols. There is a fear about increased foot traffic on campus, modified employee schedules and increased workloads with expectations that employees will also need to enforce school safety. I have a good pair of walking shoes, a clipboard and a community of eager members who want to be a part of the solution to ensure their safety as well as the safety of their coworkers, the students and the community for the safe reopening of schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you go to the next slide, please. Thank you. And as Teamsters went through some of the challenges and opportunities, including for all of their classifications, UTR wanted to take a minute to talk about some of the challenges and opportunities as it relates to the academics that our students deserve. So we know that one of the most important things that we do among many things is providing a solid academic program for our students. And we know that students who choose to return to in-person and return to choose virtually must have equal access to high-quality instruction and virtual support. As you all know, last year we had some severe budget cuts. This led to increased class sizes and teacher positions being cut. Which puts our district in a really unique situation that's quite different than other surrounding districts. Right now, our TK to third grade class sizes are twenty-seven. Our TK aides were cut. Our third to sixth grades have thirty-three students. Our secondary school class sizes are thirty-nine students, thirty-nine students, and many of our electives have up to fifty students. So planning a safe and stable in-person cohort is especially challenging for our district. And it's going to take really dedicated work in us sitting down together by administrators, by teachers, by classified staff to get it right. We know that hybrid, when you look at different models across the state and nation, hybrid instructional models have varied widely. Some plans have students attending for a half-day, some for, you know, one or two full days a week with the rest of the instruction happening virtually. We know that a lot of our families will want to still continue learning virtually. And we need to make sure that we can have a plan to do that well. Right now, there is not a plan about how teachers will balance cohorts of students. So being educator is quite hard for the educators out there, know that. I know parents have seen that as well. The amount of planning that it will take in order to do an in-person cohort, a hybrid cohort and a virtual cohort is enormous and that really needs to be thought of when we make our plans. We also saw from recent study board sessions that from schools that were in person, they've acknowledged that the quality of virtual instruction has been decreased significantly once school reopened in person. And those are districts that have really big financial, in a different financial situation than we are in. Private schools with much smaller class sizes to begin with. So we need to really think about how we're going to serve our virtual students well. Especially since many surveys have shown that the majority of parents right now want to remain in virtual learning. So rather than have a teacher curating activities and holding a small group and engaged lessons, students might have to simply do something called room and Zoom, which we know from other places has not worked well. Where a teacher is live streaming their in-person to their remote students. It's going to be really important for us to learn from the district's mistakes all around us. Recognize the unique situation we're in due to the budget cuts that happened and the increased class sizes to do a very careful plan that serves all of our students. Can you go to the next slide, please? Additionally, we know that mental health for everyone, for our students, for our families and for our staff is going to be vital. Everyone has suffered severely from this pandemic. Many of our students have lost their caretakers. They've suffered through their own illnesses or watching their family members be ill. They've suffered severe financial losses as well as just the isolation of being alone during this really, really difficult time. We also know that there are challenges of poverty and racism that have existed long before and continue to exist. And we're going to need to provide additional support to re-acclimate to in-person instruction and learning new safety protocols. I want to note that we shouldn't jump into that just for real in-person instruction. That's something that we should be really investing in now. Currently, our students have no elementary school counselors. We're one of the only districts that have no elementary school counselors. And counselors at secondary schools serve seven hundred students. That's one counselor for seven hundred students. Because of that, we've lost also valuable graduate tutors as part of our budget cuts. We lost our graduate tutors, our playworks coaches, our restorative justice coordinators, our health center staff and elementary vice principals. So we are severely understaffed for our mental health resources for our students. In order to plan for a safe and supportive return to school, the district needs to invest in trained and qualified professionals to support the student mental health and the mental health of the staff and the parents. I also want to note that we really need to take what we learned from this pandemic. Schools already, you can see, we were struggling. It's important to learn from this experience and see how we can reimagine and make things better than they were before the pandemic began. And I'm going to go ahead and pass it to my colleague. I believe that's SSA, if you go to the next slide, please. Oh, sorry, that's West Contra Costa. Yeah, go ahead.
So good afternoon again. So first of all, I want to start by saying that more than anything else, we're here to collaborate in returning to school in a safe way. We had a chance to survey the administrators and a couple of things came out resounding to us. First thing is, we're looking at preparation and planning was the number one concern of all the administrators. Some of you already know, but if you don't know for the parents out there, the plans for 2021-22 start in October of 2020. Principals, teachers, their IOTs start looking at what's going to be offered, what's working this year, what needs to be changed. All that planning takes almost six months before a school year even begins. So as an administrator, we're always looking for plan ahead and look at all the different things that need to be changed. So for us, the sooner we can start a plan, the better it is to come up with good solutions. The other part is, it's important that district communication is always on time. It's important that district communication is always uh, on time and accurate. Uh, we are finding as this process of bringing in PPEs on campus. Uh, the communication is not always clear. But we're open to making sure that that process occurs in all the campuses. And the next one is. We see the importance of professional developments. We do have to change the way we do business. And this is a great opportunity as site leaders to look at. And work with the staff to look at different ways to do things. This will include. Different and. Better grading practices, uh, looking at our curriculum, how can it best reflect our students? And still making sure that they're competitive as they go off to college or they look for a. Vocational job or training. So these are some of the. Areas that we really want to look at. What is the plan for our special populations? Our newcomers, our ELS, our sped students, our medically fragile students. It goes back to one size, uh, one size plan does not fit all our populations. Safety plans are important. One of the jobs that we have is to communicate with our communities. How are we going to keep their students safe? Each campus has its unique challenges. And we have to present to our communities how we're mitigating these challenges. It takes time to make the plan and then it takes meetings to present to the community how we're going to keep their students safe. It's also an opportunity to look at restorative justice, move away from zero tolerances in. Uh, the policies on campus. This will give us the time to plan and start looking in training staff to go in a new direction. Also goes back to planning. Sometimes, uh. Administrators or campus security has to attend a student that has fallen and might be bleeding. Sometimes they have to break up physical altercations. Training will be very important along with the correct PPE to make sure the safety of. All the adults and other students on campus. And we're really encouraged to rethink or to push on or against. Uh, Biden's administration making the state testing a must. Uh, a. Distance learners has not been good for a lot of our students. So standardized testing that will come up in April and May will first take away time from instruction. Uh, we usually take up to two weeks and then we take another week of finding the students that didn't take the test to make sure they take the test. So we're looking at a lot of loss of instruction time trying to chase down standardized testing. And the last one is the substitutes. Uh, especially in a pandemic, you know. We, we always hope that our staff will be healthy, but we can't guarantee it. So we need to make sure we have substitutes. Uh, that can, A, can jump in, in a highway model in a. Or if we are on campus that there's willing to come in in person to work with a group of fourteen. And. Reinforce, and this is the communication. Social distancing and safety, we need to instruct our parents to, to make sure their students understand. Then we can reinforce it on campus. So communication for us is super important, but none of this happens without planning. Uh, we do have some vehicles for us to plan. One vehicle is the solutions team, which is a, a table where all the unions come together. And they get a chance to discuss different issues and without negotiating anything, try to find solutions. Our concern is. The short planning of all this. We could have started planning in October. In January. Uh, time is, and for us as administrators. Uh, one of the things really hurts our motivation is. When something has to have a quick turnaround because then we have to sell it to the staff. The plan has to make sense. They would have to sell it to our community. So, uh, time for planning is very important. Thank you for this time. I will now, uh, turn it over to my colleague. Next slide, please.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Chamberlain. I am the president of the School Supervisors Association. A member of our solutions team, as Mr. De Leon has just pointed out, which is a group that works together. It's a consistent. Of all the unions, district staff and school board. We have been able to come together on many occasions. And come up with solutions. Some of those solutions are going to be addressed in here also. One of our biggest areas that we're concerned with is safety, of course, of everybody on staff. For not school front offices, they're busy, they're crowded places. We're requesting that we start thinking of additional staff to clear the protocols to ensure. That anyone that comes into our campuses is safe and symptom-free. That means temperature checks. That means proper PPE testing for those that are coming around. That means that we need enough staff to do that. And not interrupt the students and the regular staff duties. That makes sure that the rest of the day is going just as it needs to go with. Learning how to do in-person hybrid and virtual learning all at the same time. It means that if we have to bring back and go back, take two steps back. And one step forward that we are able to do that in a. Smooth flowing manner with clear planning. Proper planning, as Mr. De Leon has just pointed out, we need that time and we really should have been starting this. In October, January. Let's plan things out in timely manners. We need clear markers for where visitors will be standing and how many can come in the office at one time. We can learn from our grocery stores. We can learn from our, um. Health facilities on how they have planned and done some of this. We need designated space to hold students who are ill away from other students until a parent or guardian can come and pick them up. Not everything is going to be a COVID situation, but there will be situations where a young person. Will need to be away from other students. They've got a bad cold or maybe they've got a stomach ache. They need to be able to feel safe for themselves too. And not be looked upon and have a place where they can. Rest until their parent or their caregiver can arrive. Most front offices are small. Most elementary especially only have a small designated area. And not enough space to hide a student to, so that they feel safe and not looked upon. A hallway, sitting in a chair is not an appropriate place for a student to have to sit. As I said, we've come together in solutions and asked for different methods. Ventilation and air conditioning are hot schools. We have hot school months coming up very soon. But four of our in elementary schools such as Ford, Lincoln, Grant. Don't have air conditioning. During the summer and fall, those can get really hot, very hot degrees. Opening a window is not always going to be sufficient, especially when we have fires. Going on in our state and we have found that they happen at any time in the year with our drought seasons. Staff and students have reported because of this high heat index. And the air quality that sometimes lacks. Those people get nosebleeds, headaches and fainting. Although voters approved measure R in twenty twenty. The AC will not be completely installed in all of our facilities or even began completely until fall of twenty-one. That's six months at the earliest. And that's only for some of our school sites. Additional portable AC units are needed to ensure these conditions are safe. Some of our schools do not have windows such as RHS. Or have windows that do not open such as Kennedy High School. Even sites that do have open. Able windows will need HEPA air filters during, as I said earlier, fire season. Windows and doors must remain shut to keep classrooms smoke-free. Another. Air quality issue and we've all come together to. Make sure that those air quality standards are met and looked upon for all of our students and staff members. So far, the district has only installed some HEPA filters in the classrooms and portables, but not all. We need to continue to work towards that. Which means that more of our custodial and office and administrative and teaching. Staff as well as other classified staff are going to need to pay attention and make sure that those are working properly. I'm going to pass it to our next person.
Hello, um, I'm Kristen Persley. I'm the president of Adult School Teachers United, the union for the. Uh, teachers of the adults. Um, like all teachers, adult school teachers look forward eagerly to the time when we can safely be back in class with our students. Yet we are grateful for virtual learning as difficult as it has been. Because our students come from communities that have been hardest hit by the virus. We see the impact of the pandemic in our virtual classrooms. And we are very concerned about the effect any increase in community spread would have on our students. We know we will be the last to go back to in-person learning. Many of our classes meet in schools the children attend. And in order to maintain social distancing, we won't be able to go back to those buildings until the virus is fully under control. As difficult as it is not to see our students in person. We are glad to do what it takes to keep the community safe. Our students are the parents and grandparents of the students who attend WCCUSD schools. And the reopening of the schools affects them as well as the children. We want to see the children go back to school in a way that is safe for the adults in their lives as well as for them. Most of our students come from the Richmond or San Pablo. Um, either Richmond or San Pablo, the two cities in Contra Costa County that are hardest hit by the virus. And they come from the communities of color that have been disproportionately, disproportionately affected by the pandemic. This shows up in our classrooms. Our students get sick or they talk about family members who are sick. Sometimes whole families are sick. Many of our students are essential workers. They can't stay home and their work carries a certain risk of exposure. So we have to reopen schools as safely as possible so they don't come home to an additional risk. Of an infection brought home from school, perhaps by a child who is asymptomatic. According to the CDPH, Richmond has only received twenty thousand three hundred and twelve vaccine doses. For a population of a hundred and eleven. Um, two hun- two hundred and seven, I'm sorry, a hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and seventeen. While nearby Walnut Creek has received thirty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-four doses. For a population of only seventy thousand eight hundred and sixty. Only thirty-six percent of Richmond residents identify as white. Seventy-eight point seven percent of Walnut Creek residents are white. There are clear racial disparities in who is contracting and dying from COVID. And who has access to vaccinations that must be taken into consideration when discussing in-person learning at our schools. In spite of the stresses of the pandemic and the difficulties of virtual education. Our adult students are learning. They're worn out from working or supervising their children's learning all day. They're often in financial distress. They're anxious about the pandemic. And sometimes dealing with illness and loss. But they are coming to class and they are learning. Adult school doesn't have resources to distribute devices or hotspots to them. They have to rely on the devices they have. Many of them are having to use their phones to connect with us. But they're making it work. Sometimes they have to ask their children to help them mute themselves or use the chat on Zoom, but they persevere. We are so proud of them and we want to see them again, all of them, when we can finally return to in-class learning. I'll turn this over to my colleague. Thank you. Next slide.
Thank you, and thank you to my union brothers and sisters for their presentations. Um, as you can see, you know. We all are so eager to return to in-person instruction. When we are ready, when there's a strong plan in place and when it is safe for everyone. Um, we are all together suffering from failed government policies that. Have made this a really difficult and challenging time and exposed inequities that existed long before this pandemic. Um, and that's why it is so important that we don't cut corners. We don't just do the bare minimum. When we make a plan, we make a solid, strong and safe plan that serves all of our students. Um, and serves all of our employees to keep everybody safe, especially because we know the pandemic's had a disproportionate impact on our community. Um, as we go forward, we want to think of some next steps. How can we all come together? How can we all help to make this? Um, a safe return to schools. Number one, vaccines for those that want to get a vaccine should have access to a vaccine. Education workers, essential workers and people sixty-five and over are now eligible. Um, the websites are on the screen. I hope that folks that are interested are able to put that in and get access. We want to really emphasize that not, we don't just want our educators to build up access to vaccines. Right now, also other essential workers. And people sixty-five plus have access to vaccines as well, and we want to urge them to get their vaccine if that's something that they are interested in doing. Um, next, we want to encourage a district labor task force to advocate for increased access to vaccines. While the vaccine access has been increased to educators, it is very, very difficult for educators to get access to vaccines. It's like trying to get into the best concert. Folks are refreshing, refreshing all day long. Uh, right now, um, educators are really only able to get it on the, at the Coliseum and some Walgreen sites. They're not able to get it through Contra Costa Department of Health yet. So a joint district labor task force to help advocate for access to vaccines, not just for educators, but also for our community would be a great next step. Next is solutions team. As some of my colleagues mentioned, we have a solutions team, which is a joint labor management solutions team. Where all of us can come together to, um, really work and, and plan. Like this would be a great opportunity for us to come forward and plan. Um, unfortunately, for years and years and years, we've had two representatives from the school board on the solutions team. And that's really vital. It's very important to have all folks there so that we can make this plan. Um, we were denied, um, a second school board member. And we think that it's really important that that vacancy is filled. The more that we can all come together, this is not a negotiation. It's a place where we come to joint. Decisions, solutions, where we could have come with some of these problems. Um, and found solutions earlier. So I want to encourage. The school board to fill that vacancy so that we have two active members on the joint, on the solutions team. Uh, next is standardized testing. As you may have heard. Um, standardized testing what is, is, is set to happen, which means that a ton of instructional time is going to be put for standardized testing. Um, and if you are concerned about the impact that standardized testing this school year will have. Uh, for students in schools, there's a website that you can go to. Um, for your own student or for your schools on a state level. Uh, next is state funding. As I said, our district's really in a unique situation for several reasons. Uh, one is because the budget cuts last year have made it really difficult with our increased class sizes and the struggles of our facilities. So it's really important that we have access to funding so that we can open this up without make, cutting any corners. Without, um, doing the bare minimum, but doing the best to keep all of our students and staff safe. So if you are interested in helping support and talk to your legislator about state funding, there's also a website there. Um, I want to conclude by thanking you all for the time. Um, by urging you all to continue listening to your bargaining units, the parents in the community. So we can come to a plan that really supports all of our students. Thank you so much for your time.
President, uh, Clinton, does that conclude your presentation?
That does conclude our presentation.
Okay, thank you, uh, very much. Uh, again, uh, because we're trying to make sure that the board members are fully present. Uh, to be able to listen to everything that everyone is saying, I'm going to ask. Uh, if we can take another recess. It doesn't seem like we're doing a lot, but listening, listening intently, uh, for hours, uh, is a lot. So, um, if I can have a motion to take a five-minute recess, I would great. Before we do this, before we take the five-minute recess. Um, we're going to go into public comment next, okay? Um, we're not going to have, to back up a little bit, we're not going to have public comment. On the communications from the parent groups and from our labor partners. The reason we're not going to have that is because we normally don't have public comment on their communications. But also, I want this to be a safe space for them to say what they need to say. Regardless of how people feel about that. And so I don't really want people calling in. regardless of how people feel about that. And so I don't really want people calling in and frankly bashing any of them. So, we're going to go, but the next item is item E, and that is public comment on COVID-19 in schools. So, that is the space that's set aside for everybody to be able to call in and say what they have to say about COVID-19 in the schools. It does not have to be on the first item, which was the update. It should not be on the communication that just came from the parent groups and from labor, but whatever is on your heart, the next item is going to be your opportunity to say that. So, you might as well start raising your hands now, just so you get in there. And that said, I am asking for a motion to do a five-minute recess so we could come back and start the general public comment, shouldn't have said general public comment, the comment on this on COVID-19 in school. So I saw Mr. Gonzalez Hoi raise his hand. First, I saw the second hand go up was Mrs. Smith Folds. Technically, you might need to actually do that verbally because we're in the Zoom and people can't see you. So, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, can I have a motion for a five-minute recess?
Yeah, that's, I think that's what we were both going to do. I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Okay, and Mrs. Smith Folds, can I have a second?
I would like the second. I would also, President Phillips, I don't know how to interrupt. I would like to know if the unions could please send us that slideshow too, that slide deck also.
So, so with everybody, and I'm going to address that, I'll just address it now. So, the folks who, the parent, it was Bayside Council, they had theirs. I told them to send that to Mr. Duffy, the unions. That presentation was very thorough. Please send that to Mr. Duffy as well. Mr. Duffy, he will send it out to the board, and then I'm also going to ask for those two presentations to be attached to the agenda. So, everybody will be able to access it later, not just us, okay?
Thank you. So I do second the motion that's on the floor.
Okay, all right. So, it's been properly moved and seconded. Onto the vote, trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Okay, and Mr. Christian?
Christian, yes.
Okay, and Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
Mrs. Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
And Mr. Leon?
Leon, yes.
And Ms. Emiliano?
Emiliano, yes.
Thank you very much. Phillips is yes. So, we are going to go on a break, a five-minute break. We will be back in the Zoom at 9:06. Mr. Duffy, when we come back, please make sure that the prior presenters are not panelists anymore. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, the team is here. So, we are going to move into item E, which is public comment on COVID-19 in schools. This is not general public comment on any item that has to do with schools, but this is public comment on COVID-19 in schools. So this is your opportunity to say whatever it is that is on your heart about this issue, and we are here to listen. Please raise your hand now if you have not done so, because your hand does need to be raised. I'm going to count to 10, and then the hands that are up by the time we get to 10, those are going to be the hands that are called on, okay? One, two, three, raise your hand. Four, please raise your hand. Five, raise them. Six, seven, it's going up. Keep raising them. Eight, eight and a half, keep raising them. Nine. I'm pausing, everybody. I'm just watching the number go up. Fifty-six, nine and a half, ten. All right, so we got 56 speakers. Board seeing no objections, I'm going to extend public comment for each one of those speakers who are properly in the Zoom. But the time is still an hour, an hour, a minute and 30 seconds for public comment. So, Mr. Wall, please begin the timer and start with the first person.
Okay, I have the last three names listed too. So the first one to start will be, just one moment here, will be Katie Brohan. You may unmute.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay? All right, great. So earlier this week, I sat in on an over four-hour study session. For four hours, I heard from individuals in our area all talking about how they opened their school safely. But now I feel like I'm living in the Twilight Zone, seeing as some of the board still doesn't seem convinced that we can do this. You invited these individuals. Everything they said pointed to how it can be done safely. So, I'm asking the board members who do not believe schools should reopen to clearly outline why, because I really can't fathom the logic. We're now nearly surrounded by every single geographic district around us who's planning to open this month if they're not already. Not this fall, this month. This has to be more than ventilation issues. I can guarantee you there are schools in Oakland Unified whose ventilation, or lack thereof, is as large an issue as it is for some of ours. I'm not going to shortchange this issue. It's an issue, but there are ways to address it. My job entails working with some of the most disadvantaged schools in the Bronx and Harlem. They don't have the benefits that we do of temperate weather, and they're doing okay because they made a plan. You just need to make a plan. There's another board member who believes that masks can't be consistently worn. My three and my five-year-old wear one nine hours a day, five days a week without incident. Can be done. So what is it? Please, at least do us the service of being clear in your rationale, because for those of us who believe in science, it's getting pretty depressing. We deserve it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maya Bajanik. You may unmute. Maya Bajanik. Moving to the next speaker, Andrea Garcia Perez. You may unmute.
Good evening, board. I am a special ed preschool teacher, and I'm happy to hear the different stakeholders speak. And the question I have for you is once again, do we have a set protocol of how things are going to be established in school? Especially, I am, like I said, a special ed teacher, so how is that going to look like? My kiddos need extensive needs, and we do not have the resource. Now, one thing I do have to highlight is that this has been the most equitable session up to date. I have attended previous ones, and the stakeholders that are now presenting are finally having a chance to present. With that said, the other presenters you had had an extensive time, and our stakeholders now, they only had 10 minutes to present, and you gave them a very short notice. That needs to be changed, and you need to move forward with a more equitable and more comprehensive view of the need of every community member, not just the ones that are strategically chosen and to fit certain narratives or views. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mariela Cuellar. You may unmute.
Mariela Cuellar, I am a mother of Richmond High School, and also I am a employee of the district. I'm a teacher assistant for preschool, special education. I am speaking as a mother and also as a worker. We need to come to an agreement. Do we want babysitting in schools? Is that what we want? Because teachers has to teach. We all are educators, but we also have to see that when it comes to preschoolers, we need to make sure we are doing academics, social interactions, safety. There's a lot of children that need one-on-one. My daughter goes to high school. Like I always said, I know some people said, oh, ventilation is not a, it's an issue, but it's not everything. Yeah, if you come to Richmond High or Kennedy High, I'm not going to get tired of saying this because these schools don't have what other schools have, like El Cerrito or Pinole or Hercules. There's so many issues. There's so many factors. We all are struggling as parents, as guardians, as teachers, as teacher assistants, so we need to come, all of us, to an agreement and work as a community. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Joseph Glatter.
Hello, can everybody hear me? Okay, so my name is Joseph Glatter, seventh grade history teacher at Hercules Middle. I'm eager to go back in person, but I can't accept that we just need to learn to live with COVID as our new normal and that anyone needs to risk their lives. The government has the power to bring COVID numbers down quickly if they were willing to take these necessary steps. Why is the pressure not on them to do so? Unfortunately, I've never received an answer to this question. It's too bad our state legislators are more focused on forcing schools to reopen in person unsafely instead of enacting strong restrictions to control community spread. It seems they care more about the freedom of people to wear masks below their nose or not at all instead of our students' mental health and ability to go back in person safely. The very real negative effects of living through a pandemic is on the government leaders, not teachers or their unions. We know this because other states like Hawaii and Oregon have done a way better job handling COVID. Other countries like Australia, New Zealand, China, they're mostly living as normal now. And we could too if we sacrificed for a short time period, like they did, for a long-term reward of safety. Hundreds of teachers have died across the country. If reopening in person now is safe, then how is this happening? That's another question I never seem to get an answer to. Many students and parents are glad they're on distance learning for safety reasons and are happy with their teachers. Only 15% want to go back now. The 85% majority of parents who don't want to go back immediately are too busy trying to survive and put food on the table and can't wait four to five hours in a meeting for their chance to speak. I'm eagerly awaiting the district's plan to go back in person safely with every adult vaccinated, proper safety procedures, HEPA filters in every room. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jean Kitzner. You may unmute.
I'd like to start by, we have 100, I mean, one minute and 24 seconds instead of a minute and 30. There we go, perfect. I want our teachers, students, and community to be able to get back into the physical buildings at school. So let's have transparency and work together to make a solid plan for 2021, 22. Let's stop shutting out the unions from the reports and comments at the board meetings. Let's stop, start, stop shutting out the community from their comments at the board meetings. Let's start allowing the public to comment on items with reasonable amounts of time for comments as it was in past practices. Let's work together and include all of the stakeholders in this process, and most importantly, the parents of the communities. This will mean we might need different plans for our diverse and different needs of our diverse and different schools located all over in their communities. And perhaps, this also means that maybe we need to have different plans for different schools. Maybe the flatlands and the hills plans cannot be the same, and they need to be as diverse and different as the communities they serve.
Thank you. The next public speaker is Stacy Robinson. Stacy, may I unmute? Moving to the next public speaker is Jennifer Peck. Jennifer, you may unmute.
Thank you. I am the parent of an 11th grader who consistently tells me she hates school in stronger and stronger ways as the years go on. First, I want to echo what the employee union said earlier about clearly communicating safety plans. Everybody needs for the district to do a better job with this. This seems really clear. To our five board members, one of you did not support the MOU that we currently have, and four of you are new and inherited it. And given how much new information there is on the science and that the Harvard Global Health Experts who informed the original MOU came to one of your study sessions and explained what had changed, how could you not be compelled to? how could you not be compelled to revise and update it at this point? Our own county health officer said publicly that the metrics in that MOU were inconsistent with the counties. So how could you ignore all these factors and continue to force us to live under this MOU? Those of us who are advocating for safe reopening in small, very modest ways this spring are desperate to hear about what can be done. We're desperate for some creativity and solutions. Ideas have been put forward, like the parent who spoke earlier this evening about using Wellness Fridays, which are honestly not happening for most kids, to bring small groups together on campuses for outdoor time. We can do this. There are things we can do if there is the will to prioritize the well-being of children. Let's not be left as the very last district locking our kids out of campuses. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Ernesto Falcone.
Hi, my name's Ernesto Falcone, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak here. Something I just want to like flag, and I don't think it's been made clear, or at least I didn't catch it. But on March first, the government is setting aside ten percent of the vaccines for teachers returning and staff returning in person or already in person. And I want to make really clear, if the board doesn't vote next week, basically, to at least begin a phase-in plan, because teachers up to twenty-one days out from entering a school are eligible for this ten percent set aside, they get zero. Our community gets zero, right? And so for all the teachers and staff that want a vaccine, I'm going to give you the numbers. I did the math before this. More than half a million vaccines for the month of March are eligible to you if the board makes an affirmative vote to begin phasing and reopening next week, and zero are available to you if we do nothing. And guess what? Albany, Alameda, Berkeley, Marin, Napa, Oakland, Orindo, Piedmont, San Lorenzo, and Walnut Creek, they're all getting those vaccines starting next week. So if the argument is we need to be vaccinated first, then we need to start phasing in reopening at least three weeks after next week to make everyone who is part of that phase-in plan to get those first-in-lines, you know, priority benefits. And if we don't, then our county can order and set aside zero of those half-million-plus vaccines are coming in the next three weeks. And that's really just unfortunate, because I think we're all interested in safe reopening, and I just don't want the obvious benefit being handed to us to be squandered with this. Thank you.
Dr. Wolf?
I'm not sure what happened, but I see. Sorry, I got muted. Our next public speaker is Mrs. Fernandez.
Hello, good evening. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Petronilla Fernandez. I am a parent of four elementary school. I have a four grader. I am also a community member in West Contra Costa Parent Council leader. I have a four question for you, and this is make me concerned as a parent and community leader. My first question is, are Richmond and San Pablo School properly prepared to reopen? Do they already have protocol in place? Second, are Richmond and San Pablo School already have the sanitation supplies available for follow-up measure of our educational social distancing? Three, within the Richmond and San Pablo School, the most vulnerable school, who will be responsible if children become infected in the school? Who will be in charge of that if a student got sick? My four is, the parent has to sign a waiver for attending the physical distance learning, and I would like to please make a consideration and follow up my question. Thank you, and have a great evening, everyone.
Our next public speaker is Alex Portia.
Good evening. My name is Alex Portia. I have a first grader in the district, and I also have a two-and-a-half-year-old who's been safely attending in-person daycare since the summer. I'd like to start by saying I feel incredibly fortunate that my wife and I both are able to work from home and be co-teachers to our son while he's in remote school. But it's hard. Apart from the thirty minutes a day that he's in Zoom school, either my wife or I need to be with him to encourage him, try to make things interesting, and get him to do his work. But it's getting harder and harder to keep him engaged, and less and less tenable for us to make it happen. He has the same three activities every day, and it's become a battle. Socially, he's begun to act out, and he's losing his ability to negotiate day-to-day interactions. My wife and I are at our wits' end after a year of homeschooling. We work until midnight most nights to make up for our inability to work complete days, and my wife, who has dropped to part-time in her job to make things work. There seems to be no end in sight. Districts across the country have safely opened, and others at least have a plan to open when cases reach the levels deemed safe by local public health officials, including most of the nearby districts. Here, I haven't seen the creativity or flexibility needed to meet the immense challenges we're facing as a community. For example, I was discouraged to learn that our outdoor school options were being looked at at our school were blanket rejected at the district level. I feel hopeless and helpless. Please, members of the board lead us back to a solution-oriented dialogue. In the next few weeks, the five of you will have the opportunity to make decisions that have far-reaching impacts on the lives of thousands of children and their futures. Please, as board members, I implore you to put the children first. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stacy Robinson. You may unmute. Moving on, our next public speaker is Katie Rodriguez. You may unmute.
Good evening. My name is Katie Rodriguez, and I'm the parent of a kindergartner in the district. The science is clear. We can reopen our schools in a way that's safe for students and for staff. We've learned a lot since a year ago, and school districts across the country have been open safely. School districts all around the Bay Area are open or planning to reopen this spring, not just Marin. There are plenty of models for how to do this safely. Of course, those will have to reflect our district, but we do not need to start over. We can learn from how other districts have done this safely. The board must lead the district in reopening our schools safely. We must start to reopen this spring. At a minimum, for those who are struggling the most in distance learning, like our students with IEPs and English language learners, we must fully reopen in the fall. Our students deserve to be prioritized by our school district and our board. I know this board is relatively new, but we are almost three months into your term. The time for leadership is now. My son is struggling in distance learning. He has a wonderful teacher who is doing her very best. But kindergarten is not meant to be done remote. There is no opportunity to learn the basic lessons of kindergarten, the integration to school, the ability to engage with your classmates, to learn how to sit in circle time, to not scream out in the middle of circle time. These are really basic things, and our kids are losing out. We have no opportunities for them to do this. What is next year going to look like if we can't even start to bring them back to school now? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelly McLaren. You may unmute.
Hi, I have an eighth grader and an eleventh grader in the district. We've all heard numerous times that the science is there for the kids to be back in the classroom safely, and now. Reopening in hybrid model this fall is not acceptable. Students do need to be in the classrooms full-time and now. Our students are suffering with their grades and mental health. My sons have always been enthusiastic about school and got mostly A's in all their classes. Since virtual learning has become their reality, they have become depressed, lazy, unfocused, and my oldest is failing his junior year of high school. And this school board is failing all students of this community by not allowing them to get their in-person education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Sarah Anzia. You may unmute.
Hi, I'm Sarah Anzia, parent of a first and third grader. I ask you to set a date for returning to in-person instruction this spring. I ask you to commit to doing everything possible to be open for full-time in-person instruction in fall 2021. If some families don't want their kids to return, give them the option to stay in distance learning, but open the option for in-person learning. You yourself are government leaders. You are responsible for the education of kids in this district. That's your job. It's what you were elected to do. If the MOU is holding you back, renegotiate the MOU. This is not spring 2020. Circumstances have changed. You can renegotiate it. On the one hand, I'm no fool. Anyone can go to the county website and look up where your campaign contributions came from in the election last fall. On the other hand, I am still hopeful. I am still hoping that some of you, in addition to Mr. Phillips, will show leadership. When Barack Obama ran for president, remember, he said, yes, we can. It was a message of hope and leadership. It was a can-do attitude. And yet, all I continue to hear from most of you is, we can't. It's too hard, too many questions. I'm sorry, but that is not progressive. It's bad enough that keeping school closed is bad for kids, but it's actually bad for the whole district. We know the money follows the kids. You're about to lose kids to other districts and private and parochial schools. You're about to lose money. There go the jobs of district teachers and other employees. So don't be on the wrong side of histories here. Open the schools. Do it this spring. Make a plan.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Evan Miller.
Thanks very much, Evan Miller. Again, I'm a parent of two children in the district, and again, I'd like to reiterate that I've learned a lot from these study sessions, and I think in particular, the two that we most recently heard from, we heard experts from global epidemics. And they provided both evidence, as well as anecdotes, for how to safely open schools. They involve things such as wearing a mask, staying six feet apart, washing your hands frequently, and opening the doors to classrooms to ensure ventilation. Some very simple, concrete steps that we can start planning to do right now, so that we can open up schools in the spring. I was also struck by the most recent study session where we had local school leaders talk about reopening classrooms. And something that struck me was, all of them, a common theme that emerged was charismatic principals and leaders that clearly communicated. And I think the district would be wise to empower local leaders at each school site to begin to lay those plans. I feel like our principals are being hamstrung by not having a clear direction from the district. And I think that will really help. They'll know their school sites the best to allow us to open up in the spring. Back in August 2020, when we started to make these plans for the coming school year, we talked about being flexible to allow a return gradually to school. It feels like we're being very inflexible at this moment. And I'd really encourage the board to instruct our superintendent to start to make plans to open this spring. Thanks very much.
Our next public speaker is Cheryl Lane.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Lane. I'm glad I have this opportunity. Many of our students are struggling. I think we can all agree with that, emotionally and academically. While there's a call to return to school ASAP, many calling for this spring, I really want us to heed what was shared by many of the presenters in the second round, the parent groups. I mean, I agree, we can't be dismissive of what the schools need to safely reopen and assurances that families, especially families of color, black, Latinx, and other families want and need. We can reach consensus. We need a comprehensive return-to-school plan that are site-based. All sites aren't equal. We need health standards in those plans, equity for low-income and BIPOC communities, as Black, Indigenous, people of color. School spaces are equipped with what is needed to assure that teachers, other faculty, and students are fully safe. So we can all talk about the science. I agree. I believe in science. But we can talk about science, and we can also talk about, does the district have in place what is needed to assure families that what is needed to return back to school is safe? And so I just don't want us to be dismissive, and I've heard a lot of that tonight. Lastly, we can't reach points of consensus. I heard it all throughout the night, so I urge the school board to start focusing on those points of consensus, primarily with plans. And lastly, mental health services, let's really focus on that. All of our students are going to need it. And so as funds come down, let's think about how we can use some of those funds for mental health support for our students. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Juliette Christian Smith.
Good evening. I just want to echo the comments prior to me. I think we're all pretty much in agreement that we need a plan that is site-specific and addresses differences across our district. At the end of the day, public education is a bedrock of democracy, and right now, we have an opportunity to both capture funding and vaccinations for our staff and our district. The boat's leaving the station, and it doesn't feel like we're capturing the one, probably once-in-a-generation opportunity here. You know, we just need to start somewhere. All of these presentations we've heard have shown us that other people are doing it, from Providence, Rhode Island, to Marin City. We just need to try something. It could be small. It could be just a few teachers. It could just be a few students. But we need to try something so that we can rise to meet this moment. We need to lead with love. Reopening is an act of love for our community. So I really ask you, as so many people have tonight, to please come back to the table. Please come back to the table and lead with love. This is complicated. There are many issues. There are many needs. But we need to come from a point of, yes, how do we do this, rather than stonewalling? And we need to find a way to not get into either-or dichotomies, but get to yes.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Jeffrey Bean.
Good evening. Thank you, President Phillips and trustees, for the opportunity to speak to you. I am a teacher at Shannon Elementary in Pinole. I teach fourth grade. Whether or not we all agree on when we will reopen, it's clear that at some point in the near future, we will, whether that's this spring, in the summer, or in the fall. I have noticed a lot of politicians, President Biden, Governor Newsom, et cetera, talking about funding for learning loss. And while I'm appreciative of the extra funding that we will get, I am worried that a year or two from now, will we be back to where we were in the fall before the epidemic took place? Here are some statistics. California spends around twelve or thirteen thousand a year per student and eighty thousand per year per prison inmate. We have seventy percent of incarcerated adults can't read at the fourth grade level. We talk about equity. My school, I have thirty-three students. That's a lot of students. Our school lost two out of our three learning center staff this past school year. If we want equitable results, we all, all of us are on the same team, and I encourage you to advocate to the state and federal government to keep funding up for schools even after the pandemic is over. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Becky Raykow.
Hi, can you hear me? Thanks.
Yeah.
My first recommendation would be to build in bathroom breaks for yourselves every ninety minutes on your schedule in advance. That way, you don't have to motion for it. Sorry, I had to start there. Okay, I'm a teacher. I teach third and fourth grade at Madeira. I'm also a parent of three kids in the district. I really appreciate all of the community sessions that you're having and the different presenters. I mean, it's really good to hear everybody involved, and everybody is a stakeholder here, and we have to value that and remember that we're all part of this school community. I really appreciated Ms. Lane and Mr. Bean's comments. They were really good. The one thing that I noticed in Mr. Freezer's and Mr. Wolf's presentation was the classroom design space. And what I noticed was, you would have fourteen desks, but I didn't see any walking space for a teacher. And so like, as someone who's had training with Millie Burns and restorative practices, and you build classroom culture, community circles, like, this is like going back to nineteen fifty. You know, it's like, you know, we have to think about, how do we want education to look in our classroom going forward during this time and be responsive to the social, emotional needs of our students? So I just really want to put that out there when we think about classroom design. So I thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is Maria R. Our next public speaker is Maria R.
Hola, buenas tardes. Me llamo Maria. Soy una escriba en una oficina de pediatra in Richmond. He estado trabajando ahí este año que ha pasado y he visto muchos niños y cómo han progresado en estos tiempos de COVID-19. Hemos visto niños de bebés hasta niños de 18, 19 años. Hemos visto hartos niños que han empezado con síntomas de depresión, de ansiedad, y de verdad ha sido bien triste ver cómo los ha afectado tener escuela por el computador. Pienso que es muy importante que empiecen a tener reglas para empezar a tener estos niños, para que puedan regresar a sus colegios, porque no puedo creer que hay otras ciudades aquí en la área que tienen los colegios. Como en Richmond, no tenemos eso y no es posible en este momento. Pienso que es bien importante que los profesores que quieren tener vacunas deben de ayudarlos ustedes para que sí puedan recibir esos, esas vacunas, para que estén saludables para enseñarle a nuestros niños que sí necesitan ayuda, especialmente también los niños que vemos en nuestra comunidad que tienen desibilidades, que no pueden poner mucha atención a estar en el computador por cuatro, tres horas al día. Entonces, por favor, abran los colegios otra vez para nuestros niños.
Our next speaker is Christina Veronian.
Hello, everyone. First of all, I'd like to say it's great to finally have an opportunity to have some public comment. It has been very discouraging and frustrating. As a teacher in this district, I work at Lincoln Elementary as a fourth-grade teacher, to come to these study sessions and have to wait for four hours before I get an opportunity to say anything. I've asked parents to come speak because they want their voices heard. And unfortunately, when you've got multiple kids at the house and you're working all day, you can't wait for four hours to make your voice heard. So please, give us the opportunity more often to do this. I very much appreciate that you did open this up to us today. I will say, it has been very frustrating to have these study sessions over and over again with hand-selected quote-unquote "experts" that are pushing a very specific agenda, which is being echoed by a very specific parent group that we have heard over and over tonight. I will tell you right now, we as teachers want to go back so bad. We are suffering. Our kids are suffering. This is hard. So for people to keep saying, oh, this is only the teachers' unions. The public perception is that the teachers don't want to go back. Absolutely not. We do not like this either, and we need to be safe. So please, sit down with us and let's come up with a plan that actually keeps everyone safe and don't just throw us back in the classroom just to appease some peoples on the hills. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Giorgio Cosentino.
Hello, hi, I'm Giorgio Cosentino. I'm a former district teacher, current district parent, and I'm also employed as a virologist. I perform COVID testing. I do work with the COVID virus. And so I'm familiar with some of the safety issues. One of the things I wanted to bring up, though, was just, it had to do with the topic of fear. And I have to word this very delicately and show that, you know, the utmost respect for everyone involved. When I, let's see if I chose the right wording here. Teacher safety is key. And accuracy of information is key. I've been hearing talk about teacher deaths across the country. And any death, you know, is tragic. So far, what I've read is a lot of those teachers, teacher deaths were not relevant to the classroom. It's still tragic to lose teachers. But we need accuracy of information if we're going to really understand the risk that we're dealing with here. I want to make it clear, I will never put teachers in harm's way. I just want us to respect the virus but not fear it. Okay, we have to take a deep breath with our masks. And we're going to get through this. And but I just, again, accuracy of information is key. One last thing, I disagree with the CDC director saying the vaccine is not necessary for teachers. Some teachers are in high-risk situations due to health issues and maybe teaching in a high-risk area. So some teachers need vaccine.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gillian Banks-Co.
Hi, okay, so I want to apologize for my outburst before. I just want to say that, like, from moment to moment during all of this, I really swing wildly, like, between anger, compassion, desperation. Right now, it's really like feeling like hopelessness. I'm trying to gather my notes here. So I want to say that it was really good to hear from such a wide range of parent groups and even the union tonight. And that while I hear that we all have different motivations, what we're all asking for is the same thing. Where is the plan? Where is the plan? Okay, so the district, not the board, not you, board. You've only been here a short time. The district has had a year to create it and to listen to everybody, and they haven't. And so this is why I'm feeling really hopeless. At the beginning of this pandemic, I was like, okay, it's a year. We lose a year, it'll be okay. But I see districts opening all around us. And after listening to myriad study sessions and board sessions, we are so, so far behind. Our dashboard was only created a short time ago. Whereas other districts, everything's all checked off. I just feel really hopeless now. And I don't know what else. I mean, even if, even if this board said, all right, district, do it, I don't see that it's possible. And I don't even see how, honestly, they can open in the fall. That's all. Thanks.
Our next public speaker is Jesse Montano.
Hi, I'm Jesse Montano. I don't have a polished statement, per se, that I can squeeze into 90 seconds. And I'm sorry, as a first-time parent of young kids, that I didn't join one of the parent committees. But here I am. What I do have is an adopted foster daughter and a son, both with IEPs. A five-year-old boy who was promised a 1-1 aid, and a seven-year-old daughter who just came from demonstrating with a group of students, teachers, and parents, saying they want schools back in campus safely and soundly. And this is my daughter on our way home. And I want to make sure that you can hear her. I want to make sure that she has a seat at the table.
Open schools now. Open schools now. We need our teacher. We need our friends. Open schools now. Open schools now. We need our friends. We need our teachers. Open schools now. Open schools now.
And the teacher that she so much wants to see in class, she's listening to us right now. And I just want to say thank you. Thank you for supporting us. Thank you for supporting our family. Thank you for doing your best. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I see you, and I couldn't make it these two years she's had without you. Board members, listen to my daughter. Put her as number one, as your mission statement states. My son, too. All those other kids of parents that support a phased approach to return to school safe and sound. Waiting will not change our situation. It will simply extend the interruption you continue to create with your negligence. After other similar school districts have proven you have the power to come back and save these children. You talk about fear of death. What about the fear that comes from the impact of your negligence? Let's focus less on the reasons why we can't get back, but focus on the solutions to get us back quickly and safely. So we minimize this interruption. Our kids deserve better, and you have that power. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mujahidun Sumchai.
You know, it's been really nice listening to everyone. It's 9:48 on a Friday night, and normally, I'm trying to just rest from the week. I'm a teacher, and I'm also a parent. And I'm also a National Alliance on Mental Illness State trainer, as well as a local community organizer, helping families that have a loved one with a severe and persistent mental illness. The suffering that we have gone through for the past year, no one has yet mentioned that's because of that fool that used to be in the White House. He wanted to strike people with a wall instead of taking care of the illness. That's one of the problems that has made things dysfunctional. I've heard a lot of love here, and it's really encouraging. Just be willing to forgive wrongdoing that comes from irrational behavior. We are all imbalanced, and we need to get our spirits, our minds, our emotions, and our bodies aligned. It will take time. I'm glad we have not rushed like other places. We've taken our time, and we've minimized the deaths in this district because others do have them. Teachers, principals, and students, and family members. And I have had that in my classroom. Love you. Be well.
Our next speaker is Kent Wood.
Hello, and thank you. I am first and foremost a father, but I'm also a scientist. I spend my days looking at numbers, poring over data. Lately, the world's been rich with numbers, updated in real time in shiny graphs. A few interesting and relevant numbers I look at. Our county's been eligible for in-person instruction for K through six for three weeks. This is based on guidance from experts at the county, state, and federal level, who are telling us we can do this safely. We've met two or three criteria to move to a less restricted tier, testing positivity rate and the equity metric. We'll meet the third and final condition in approximately two weeks. What's going to happen then? What will our county and community look like? Gyms will be open for indoor in-person exercise. Restaurants will be open for indoor dining. We can go to the movies in person. I don't really know about a popcorn and a Coke yet, but maybe. I still can't go to have a beer unless that bar will also serve me a slice of pizza for a dollar. Two weeks. This is what life will look like then. Are you prepared to tell our children that we feel it is okay to watch the latest Marvel movie in a theater? Take a Zumba class in person. Have a slice of pizza at your favorite watering hole. We feel that these things are safe, but it is not okay. It's not safe to go to school in person. What kind of message is this sending our youth? What does this say about us as a community, as a society, about what we hold dear? What values are we teaching? What message are we sending? It's certainly not that they are the most important thing to us, that we value and trust science. It's certainly not that our teachers, our schools, and their education are indispensable. Please, I implore you, put our children first. We all know that this is not working for many of them, possibly most. Give them.
Our next public speaker is Diane Maddox.
Yes, I didn't know I was going to be able to speak. Two-thirds of the prior ability to speak were parents who could consider private schooling and not educators. I'm not sure why. We already surveyed a majority who want to return when it's safe. A former board member made a comment that offended me. I'm offended that other countries don't have one-half million deaths like we do. And most of those deaths are in poor communities. Science does not favor gathering yet. Even on mainstream media, they talked about poor ventilation in schools, war, woefully poor. There are five unions involved in this plan, not just teachers. Teachers, even though they have families and careers, spent the summer pro bono making the distance plan. And if we were allowed time after our workday and our home-life day to make a plan rather than spinning our wheels defending our plans and everyone's lives, we could make another plan that is proper so we don't have to spin our wheels once we implement it. Vaccinate and ventilate. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kay Hardy.
Thank you. San Leandro is opening on March 15th. Livermore is opening on March 22nd. Oakland has an agreement by their board to open in mid-March. Berkeley has an agreement to open March 29th. We need to be on that list. We need the board to lead for kids. When we have a plan, but the county health officer has assured us that they'll have more ability to get vaccines for teachers. But I'm thrilled that I've already heard of several teachers that I know getting at least their first shot, which is really exciting and moving us towards a better place. Please focus on what the kids need. We don't want to be the only district not making a plan to open in the spring. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alan Badlau.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. It's bull you, like, beautiful place. And I think El Surillo is a beautiful place to live. When we got this house, people asked me, where is your kid going to go to school? And I'm like, that beautiful school right down the street, Harding. But she can't. She's not there. I have to say, I just have two really simple demands. We have to reopen fully in the fall. And that means, my other simple request, we have to reopen in any way we can this spring. We're really squandering an amazing opportunity to get our kids back in a small scale so that we learn about scalability issues. I really want to applaud the recent improv sessions that we've had. And everything that I've heard from the experts that we've invited is that there are plenty of ways to think about safely reopening schools. Ventilation and vaccination, it's hard to argue with that. Both of those are science-driven, evidence-based. What I will say is that in my role as an educator in the Contra Costa Community College District, I feel like my union is advocating for me, but my administration is also listening to my union. And I worry about the acrimony that's being created between parents and teachers in the district. And I wish that we could all get together around this common goal that will help all of our students, which is to figure out how to reopen safely. We have to do that. That is your job. We need a plan to reopen safely. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Greg. If you could say your full name.
Hi, this is Greg Schaefer. I just wanted to say one thing that I really appreciate, that the opportunity to have the teachers' unions on this call. I think it's very important that they're represented in all of these meetings, and they should be invited to all of these meetings because they're a massive part of the community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frank Hahn.
My name is Mr. Hahn. I'm the father of three daughters in this county in elementary and middle school. I worked in emergency medicine for the past 20 years. I'm a US Army Infantry veteran, a retired Union firefighter, paramedic, and a California Union-registered nurse. I'm also a teacher nationally and here in Contra Costa County. I know what it means to serve. I've done my duty for the good of our nation and the public every single time someone dialed 911. Every time a building was burning, and every time bullets were being fired in my direction. You might even say I know a thing or two about unions. I want to point out that I've been on every front line since before 9/11, up to and including COVID-19. When you Google hero, you see pictures of our military, firefighters, police, certain public figures, and as of last year, nurses. A simple definition for a hero is a person who is admired or idealized for courage, outstanding achievements, or notable qualities. I assure you, I'm not tooting my own horn, but I can tell you that making difficult decisions in my field takes courage. You should try it. Mr. Phillips has been doing it every meeting. You know who I don't see when I look up heroes? I don't see teachers, not all teachers, that is, the public school teachers here in West Contra Costa County. I'm looking for you all to step up, especially the empowered Union representatives. I hear you waiting for 100% safety, 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 safety. It's the word I keep hearing. Let me let you in on a little secret. It's never going to happen. I've laid to rest many friends at the fire department despite the best safety measures in place. Planes crash, we're still flying. Cars crash, we're still driving. I've been going through outwork through all of this prior to the vaccines. So have my Union brothers and sisters.
Our next speaker is Maisha Harris-Gash.
Good evening. And it's like, I don't even know where to start. But what I will say, one, my sister colleague from Lincoln Elementary, I felt you. I felt those words. I'm a Richmond Unified School District from Lincoln to Washington to Downer Junior High. I'm a very proud graduate of Kennedy High School, and I currently teach at Kennedy High School. Words matter. I learned that first in my family, and I learned it from Ms. Johnson at Downer Junior High. I learned that words matter from his rival, 10th grade at Kennedy High School. I learned it when I was a senior with Ms. Mack. Words matter. And what I want to say is, we need to start using words that communicate that we are all in this together because we all are in this together. I would say to those parents who say words and make inferences that it's the teacher's fault. Well, were you last week talking your colleague off of a ledge who wanted to quit? Was it you who was talking to your colleague who might have some depression, some suicidal thoughts? Was it you? No, but I can tell you it was me. No, but I can tell you it was me. And then what did I have to do? I had to lean on my community, on my village, on my people to put myself back together. But I'm glad that my colleagues know that they can call upon me in this time. We want to be in school. Some of my other colleagues mentioned that too. We know that we are best at what we do when we are standing before our students, but understand something. Our lives matter too. Some would say some of the stuff in relation to Kennedy High School and to Richmond High School is chickens coming home to roost because of the neglect of this district over decades behind Kennedy and Richmond High School. Kennedy is the only high school that is still on its original building. My dad, my aunt, my uncle, they're all in their seventies. They went to Richmond High School. It's a different school. So let's come together and let's use words that say we are all in this together.
Our next speaker is Liz Miller. Liz Miller, you may unmute.
Hi, thank you. I have two kids in the district. I am a nurse. I remember over a year ago now having our first COVID patient. It was terrifying, scared, fearful. We didn't know what we were dealing with, but we were there for our patients. Since then, it's been a year. It's been a long, hard year. We've had all kinds of new information come in. We've gone through so many different scenarios, so many different regulations, constant change. It's been difficult, but it's been worth it. We are good at it now. This January was insane. I can't even explain the death that I saw. It was massive. And we were awesome and we did it. And that's what we need. We need a plan. We need people to come together and we need to open the schools and the hip, the frustration I'm hearing from teachers and the union is that they don't have a plan. And I, I hope that, that what they want to do is reopen. That's what I'm hearing. But they need a plan to unite. And they need to do that right away. It is just terrible at home with all the students. And I think the number one reason to go back is so we close those disparity gaps that already existed, but they're getting worse by the day. And every day it's causing harm. And you need to unite and you need a plan this week. And it needs to be done safely. And we have heard from the experts that it can be done. It is being done all around us and we are behind. And we need to get.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Guadalupe Enlana.
Hello. Good evening, board members. I, yeah. Can you hear me? Okay, that I, I mean, I keep changing when I'm getting ready to say because something keeps popping into my head. Every minute I hear a new speaker come up. And I think the important thing is that we don't have a plan. We're talking about wanting to reopen and wanting to reopen to what? There is no plan. So how can we support something that there's no plan to? Like, we, we, we have no idea what that's going to look like. Everybody's throwing out their, you know, it could be this, it could be that. It could be a lot of things, but we don't know. And I think really cutting off the community, the teachers, into being able to have, have their voice heard into the settings of what we expect are supposed to be is really, and then I keep hearing, you know, the experts are saying, the experts are saying, you know, teachers are experts in themselves, you know, I'm supporting the teachers. I'm supporting the people who are actually on the ground in the classroom and the parents. I keep hearing a lot of parents talk. But I think I get as many calls as the board members do on an everyday basis talking about what's going on from the community that's not being heard on these calls today, right now. And that's the sad part, that I wish every parent who called would say, I am calling from this school. And then we will see the disparities that we're talking about. I don't hear my community speaking. I don't hear my parents calling in. So I think that's where we have to go back. I think we have to go back to really talking, listening. And I'm not going to get, give any of the board members away with saying, you guys weren't here last time because I was on the campaign road with you guys. We had a lot of conversations over this. We've had a lot of time. Everybody on this board comes in with their specialty. Everybody on this board has been around. So I think everybody on this board has now their job to do and be able to bring everyone together into making a plan. And that's what we want. We want a plan.
Our next speaker is Emily May Mute.
Good evening. I want to say thank you for holding these meetings. I am a parent of a freshman and of a seventh grader. I work in research. I'm driving into work every day. I'm one of the percentage of parents who would send their child back to school. And I've read the studies about community spread through schools. So that's, I'm giving you that as my background. I also recognize that as a district, we are extremely far behind in our planning. From listening to all these, that just seems to be agreed upon from most people that have popping in here. So I also recognize that that's, it's un, it seems to me unlikely that we will be back sometime this spring. And I also recognize that this has been one of the hardest years ever, probably for teachers, parents, district employees, everyone. I have teacher friends in many states. I've been very active within schools. I, my heart goes out to everyone. So I, I have a lot of patience and understanding, knowing that this is a hard decision to make. That being said, if we are not back full in school, not talking hybrid, by the fall of 2021, I don't know where my patience will go by that point. I, we do need the plan. I also recognize we, I've heard many people say we need to start.
Our next public speaker is Kareem Walker Thomas.
Hello. Hi, how y'all doing? I'm a single father of three, three kids in the Richmond District. And, you know, I'm helping out my grandpa and everything and, and he's, he's sick and everything. And I don't want to, you know, they, they need to come home and get my grandpa sick because the immune system and it's hard to, you know, think about everything going on right now with the COVID and everything. And I really don't want to get sick. So like, we're thinking about the plan and everything. So how, how would it all go on if everybody gets sick or I, my kids is anti-social, though you don't want to like go outside or nothing like they're scared to walk outside because they don't even go to the store or nothing. So, yeah. That's just all I gotta say. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Deborah Small. Deborah Small, you may unmute. Moving to the next, our next public speaker is Francisco Ortiz.
Good evening again, board members, community and staff.
Hi, I unmuted myself. What happened?
Oh. Go ahead, Francisco. Deborah, we'll bring you back in a moment if we can start the clock over for Francisco.
So I just wanted to address a couple of issues. When we go back to face-to-face instruction, where we have an increased amount of counselors, 20 plus counselors per site to support the mental and social and emotional needs of our students and staffs. Or are we going to still have one part-time person for 500 students? Are we going to have increased nurses, psychologists, social workers, or education support providers that were cut last year because of budget mismanagement? We've been hearing a lot of privileged majority parents who really need to disavow their growth test standards of martyrdom for educators. We've here, we've heard privileged parents who need to understand that educators are not supposed to give ourselves away until nothing remains. There is an inherent logic of racism, classism, but especially misogyny in the rushed return to school debate. Because teachers are feminized, we're expected to forego our well-being. Folks with privilege that have had the loudest voice are advocating for a, for a return to an inequitable school system that wasn't working for generations. Educators are not the managers of COVID. We need to be advocating at the state level. We are the fifth largest economy and we are 46 in funding.
Our next public speaker is Deborah Small. You may unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My name is Deborah Small. I'm a parent of a fourth grader at Michelle Obama School. I'm also a member of the ASAT Executive Board. I serve as parliamentarian. And I'm a Richmond resident. But I'm also a grandparent who is the sole caretaker of a nine-year-old. A position I did not expect to find myself in at this point in life. My grandson is nine years old. At the age of seven, he had already experienced the loss of both of his parents, which means he is a traumatized child, a child who has already experienced adverse circumstances. This year of COVID has been extremely difficult for both of us. It's been difficult for him not being able to play with his friends, not being able to participate in sports. It's been difficult for me to be a parent, a caretaker, a cook, a chef, a chauffeur, a coach, and also a person who had to work to earn a living. So I would like him to be back in school very much. But I'm also aware of the fact that the vaccine does not prevent us from getting COVID. It just prevents us from getting sick and going to the hospital. I cannot afford to leave my child as an orphan. I really want those people who claim to assert that Black Lives Matter to care about the life, my life, and the life of my grandson and the risk that we might have to bear if schools go back too soon. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pasquale Rassano.
Hi, good evening, board members, and thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Pascal Rassano. I'm the parent of two kids that go to Fairmont Elementary School. I'll just be short with my comments tonight. I had originally planned on making a case for reopening schools in some capacity, any capacity really, that this spring by reiterating some of the compelling points made by other people tonight. And while I'd still like for that to happen after listening tonight, I have little hope that it will. Instead, I'll make a simple plea to the board, to the, to the district administration and its bargaining units. Make a plan. Our community is, our plan is the only way that we can address all of the valid concerns voiced this evening. Unify the community around a reopening project. We heard from the union representatives tonight that a solid plan will take at least six months to develop. So please, please get everyone to the table and get to work. On a final note, let's remember that there is a light at the end of the tunnel. It's highly likely that anyone who wants to get a vaccine will be able to get one by mid to late summer. Meaning, most adults will be vaccinated by the start of the next school year. Please consider that while you're setting your targets for this fall and weighing hybrid versus in-person full-time instruction. So let's get creative, work with the kids in mind, build meaningful consensus, and let's get it done. Remember, we're all in this together. We can, you can do this, we can do this, and we must do this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Reed McLaren.
Hi, I'm an eighth grader at Plano Middle School. And I feel like I'm being forced to go from sixth to ninth grade because I'm lacking a good education this year. And kids in Aranda and other wealthier neighborhoods are allowed to all go to school, but we are not. Why can't I get an education just like the rich kids can? I'm falling behind kids not only in private school, but now kids in other public schools that can get a real education. And I don't live on the hill. My parents cannot afford to send me to private school. So does that mean I do not deserve an education? I miss my classmates, my teachers, and my friends. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that comment. Board, I need to interject for a moment. It is now ten thirteen. We do have public comment left and we have some housekeeping that we need to do. I am going to ask for a motion to extend this meeting to 11:15. I do not believe we will be here anywhere close to 11:15. But I want to make sure that we have enough time to finish the public comment and do the housekeeping. Can I please have a motion to do that? I don't even think we'll be here till 11. I'm just being safe. But can I have a motion to do that? Thank you. Trustee Smith Folds, can you verbally say it because we're on the?
So moved.
Thank you, ma'am. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy. Thank you, Mrs. Smith Folds. Onto the vote, Mrs. Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Mr. Christian?
Christian, yes.
Mr. Gonzalez Hoy?
Gonzalez Hoy, yes.
Mrs. Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Mr. Leon?
Leon, yes.
Miss Emiliano?
Emiliano, yes.
Phillips, yes. Thank you so much for that. Mr. Woll, will you please proceed with the public comment?
Certainly. Our next speaker is Angela Silver Lima.
Hi, my name is Angela Silver Lima. I'm the parent of a second grader at Miravista. Schools need to reopen, but they need to reopen when it is safe to do so in a way that is safe for all stakeholders. I've gone back and forth on whether or not I feel comfortable sending my son to school. On one side, the risk of catching COVID, both for my health, my child's health, and my family's health, but also the financial risk is just too high for my family. On the other hand, I have seen my son's social emotional health deteriorate. He's not getting any time with his peers or his classmates. He gets 25 to 60 minutes a day on Zoom, depending on his teacher's mood. What happened to Wellness Fridays? What happened to the care for our children's social emotional needs that we were promised? What happened to those things in the digital backpack? On Monday, one of your speakers said, in order to reopen in hybrid, you have to perfect the digital, the distance learning. There's no communication. It's a joke. You guys are planning to make a plan, to make a plan, to make a plan. It's a joke. We need more transparency from you and we need action.
Our next speaker is Andrea Garcia.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, this is Sherry Garcia. It looks like my daughter's name is still on the Zoom here. I am a parent of four children in this district spanning from elementary school to high school. I appreciate the past city sessions that this board has offered, which has provided so much information and especially this opportunity for public comment. I also say hello to Superintendent Duffy, our union reps, and fellow community members. I implore our district leaders and union representatives to engage in negotiations immediately with the goal to return to in-person instruction. I urge you to listen to the science and focus on safety. I understand we have a large district with many challenges that need to be addressed. I believe we can do hard things and I believe in the power of working together. Education is a critical and fundamental part of our children's development that provides self-worth, value, and purpose. Please work as quickly as you can to return our children to a more optimal learning environment. I understand there is a history of mistrust in this district. This is why transparency is critical. Please negotiate a detailed plan that addresses the equity disparities across our district. Please share your plans and/or your progress towards one in a timely manner. The thought that our children can possibly miss an entire year of in-person instruction is baffling and incredibly sad. I understand.
Our next speaker is Raka Ray.
Hi, my name is Raka. I'm a seventh grade science teacher at Helms. I can't speak to other schools, nor will I presume to. I will only speak about Helms. Not seeing my students Not seeing my students and staff this year has been very hard. Regardless, we've made some connections. We've had important conversations about racism, grief, depression, global warming. You know, the usual stuff. My students are brilliant, smart, kind and so resilient. And I also know that this pandemic has been disproportionately difficult for my school community. We have lost loved ones. We have been sick ourselves. Regardless of whether an infection happens on campus, a dead teacher will have to be replaced and we already have a subs shortage. During a normal school year, I usually have to step in to cover for absent teachers, frequently several times a week. My students are all black and brown. We have a large population of newcomers, which is students who have been in the country five years or less. We can all agree that our reopening plans must include Spanish-speaking partners. What about families who speak mom, Arabic, Punjabi, Mong? How are we sharing our decision-making process with them? The one thing that I asked the board is that you let our site speak for ourselves and not let any one group, no matter how passionate, determine the solutions for communities they do not have the lived experiences of. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Judy F.
Hey, hi, everyone. I am the parent of two children, two students in middle school and high school. And I really want to, first of all, show appreciation for our school district because you were one of the first ones to close. And in our country, and that has saved lives. You're also, you know, doing a great job. In our high school, you're letting our kids start school later. And we know with teenagers, they need more sleep, like these things are important. And I hope that we can continue to keep that as we move forward. And to thank the school board, Superintendent Duffy, staff, and especially our teachers who are doing such incredible work during this really difficult time. There's been a lot of discussion tonight and I know before about whether we come back to school or not. But I'd like to talk about something else and that is when we come back, let's do things differently. Let's really use our technology and do personalized learning, especially in math. When our kids fall behind, it's so hard to catch up. We now have technology. We can support teachers. When there's thirty kids in a classroom, they're at thirty different levels. It's impossible for kids to catch up and they feel, you know, like they're not a good student. And that affects their, the way they feel. It affects families. So when we come back, let's just do things differently. And do this for the kids and our teachers. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Nishan Williams.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. I just would like to echo what the previous speaker just said. You know, and I'm an advocate, like we've talked about reimagine opening schools, but schools were broken before the pandemic. So they need to be reimagined anyway. The other thing I want to say is, is our, if our focus is only to open schools for kids, we're missing the mark. I'm a teacher, a middle school teacher at Levania Dejean Middle School. And if the only thought is open them for kids, then that means you're excluding me. That means you're willing to sacrifice me. As a teacher. So we can't just say open schools for kids. I'm a teacher, I'm a mother and I'm a wife as well. The other thing I want to say is the thought that's been just ringing through my ears and it's going to sound utterly crazy. Is I think maybe we have too many expectations of responsibility on our schools. We have to feel familial needs, social needs, emotional needs, mental health needs, teaching needs, counseling needs. And now all of these families are suffering because school was the cornerstone. I thought that was what our families were for. So maybe we need to reimagine. School and reimagine our communities and reimagine the services that are in our communities, not just our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is. Alex Boyers. Alex Boyers, you may unmute. Moving to the next public speaker, Eliza Sarah Shon, you may unmute.
Hi, I'm a parent of a kindergartner and a fourth grader in the district and I really want to thank everyone here for showing up and participating, including the extended community that's watching. My family is just one of the thousands of families in the district whose kids are suffering with this distance learning. Especially my kindergartner, and I echo the words of the mom who spoke tonight who said kindergarten over Zoom is just heartbreaking. You've heard from so many parents tonight who spoke movingly about how this experiment of distance learning is failing the kids, so I'm not going to dwell on that. And you've heard from the folks who are urging you to follow the science and follow in the footsteps of the other districts, so I won't dwell on that either, but I really want to comment that. What we heard from the unions and the teachers and the administrator groups, it meant so much to me to hear from you tonight. And I've attended a number of these sessions over the weeks and this is the first in which I've heard directly from the teachers and school staff. And so it's baffling to me that you haven't been more active in the conversation. You know, you raised such important questions and concerns and I'm just floored that we're asking them as questions now instead of creating solutions to get our kids back in the in the classroom now. So teachers and administrators, we parents see and deeply, deeply appreciate how hard you are working during this insane and impossible time. So thank you for that. All of the points you made are reasonable and planable, so I just don't understand why we're sitting here this many months later and asking questions instead of drawing answers. So the person who said tonight that we're all here out of love, let's use this love as strength and and come together as a community and get our kids back in school. Thanks very much.
Nishan Williams.
I just spoke. Are you giving me another opportunity?
No, I apologize. Thank you. The next one is Amy Bingham.
Good evening. I want to talk a little bit about extracurricular activities. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I want us to talk about extracurricular activities. I am a parent of a student that has been able to benefit from athletics on campus, non-contact conditioning. And I just want to echo what some of the previous speakers spoke about, about, you know, if we can have non-contact masked exercise on campus. Can we think about ways to have OT for certain children or speech in very small or individual groups? Can we bring extracurricular groups that are mostly about fellowship back to campus outside, masked, socially distanced, voluntary? Where it's mostly about fellowship and being together. I think there are small ways that we can work together to get more kids on campus to feel the benefits that kids like mine have felt from doing non-contact conditioning. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Calderon. Maria Calderon, you may unmute. Our. With Maria, we are moving to Thomas Prather. Thomas, you may unmute.
Yes, I'm Thomas Prather. I'm a twenty-two-year veteran teacher in this district. My, both my wife and I work in this district and my daughter is about to. Will possibly be a student in this district. In a couple, few months ago, I recently received a quadruple bypass. And, you know, and I, and the reason why I express that is because this has been the hardest year of my entire life. And the life of our family and as, as like everybody else. And we need to, we need to really think about this and I. Think about all this in a loving way and try to support each other. This. We are heroes, no matter what that guy says and that guy knows who he is. My wife and I are getting vaccinated. But still, we need to think about, you know, it's true. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't. The vax, the vaccine, vaccine does not protect us completely from getting the virus. It only protects us from dying. As far as I know. We will have to do hybrid learning if we go back in the spring. How is that possible logistically? And why is there no plan already? We should be embarrassed. We are the ones that don't have a plan. We should be embarrassed that we don't have a plan. Where is the beef? Where is the plan? Mental illness, we need to help with mental illness when we go back to the schools. That is extremely important.
Our last public speaker is Maria Calderon. President Phillips, this concludes our public comment for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. World. Thank you to everyone who called in to express your opinions, your thoughts and feelings, beliefs. On this very important subject. Your board heard you. Everyone was paying close attention. Your superintendent heard you. The rest of the staff heard you. Everyone was paying close attention. We are now going to move on to item F, which is com, let me back up just a little bit. In keeping in line with what we've been doing for these study sessions. We're not going to discuss this as a board on this evening. But when we do get the board comments, I will have some follow-up information about discussion because I know everybody is waiting for it. So that said, we will move to item F, which is comments from the Board of Education. And we are starting with trustee Smith Folds this evening.
Trustee Phillips, can you come back to me, please?
Yes, ma'am, I can. Mr. Christian?
Yeah, thank you, President Phillips. We're basically making comments right now or we just?
These are your closing comments for the evening.
Okay. First, I would just like to thank everyone. This evening. For expressing your concerns and pouring out your concerns from your heart. From all directions. And everybody's heart is there because we all want to see our schools back open. And we want to do it in a safe way. And making sure that all the properties are in place throughout our district. And making sure that everybody will be able to go home end of the day to be with their families when they leave work and when they, when the kids leave school, go home, everybody being safe. And we're all following the protocols and making sure that we do all the right things that are necessary. This is, you know, this is no joke, but the things we do as a board, we have to make sure that we do the right things. And. And I heard all the concern. And like I say, my heart is there because I care about our kids and I care about our community. I care about. Our teachers. I care about our staff. I care about everybody. Because I believe, you know, that we have to be together and working together. And sometimes, you know, you know, we want to throw this and those certain things that, no, let's work together and put. Our minds together because we have a lot to do and we have a lot to build. And we have to grow. We have to push forward. And, and we have to really, you know, put all boots to the ground and make it happen. And so I just didn't get in this just to get on the school board, just to be on the school board. I left my position as a classified staff. From this district, the district I worked in for over fifteen years. And I, I care about our kids. I care about our teachers. I care about all. I just didn't get in this. I care because my heart is to make things better, to work with people and to see things done right. And so, so we're going to push forward. We're going to make things happen. And, but like I say, it's going to take all of us sitting down at the Brotherhood of the Table, like Martin, like Martin Luther King said, coming together and sitting together. As men and women, young ladies and young men, that we working together to really make a difference. And elevating our kids to go to the next level. And I really want to see our kids go to the next level. Yes, everybody's hurting. Everybody got stuff going on in their house. Everybody got things happening. I tell you one thing, you have to work on self to get self-moving. And if we focus on getting self-together, we sure we could get a lot of other things together too. So, so I'm, like I say, I'm fired up and I want to see things happen. And I'm ready to push forward, but we gotta come together. Put this blueprint together and get our schools back moving and I really want to see that happen. I heard a lot tonight and, you know, sitting here looking at the screen, yeah, it's tortured to my mind. Looking at the screen for how long? For a long time, sitting here trying to stay awake and trying to stay focused. But yes, I heard everything and I tell you one thing. I'm ready to get stuff done. And like I say. There's a lot needs to happen. So my heart is heavy. And, and, and I'm always approachable person that you could always approach, always can talk to. I spent my fifteen years at Elsweater High School, worked diligently day in and day out, helping our young people. Being a mentor, being a service to our community. I don't pour myself out. And I tell you, I didn't come this far. Just to get up here and do nothing. I'm ready for action. And so the only thing I'm just saying is, it's time that we, from this tonight, it's time to push forward. Because I care. And so that's all I have to say. I love everybody. You know, even, you know, you know, people got motives and ambitions and stuff like that, but I'm gonna tell you, pure love, don't think evil. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christian, for those remarks. We're going to move on to Mr. Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you, President Phillips, and thank you to our colleague, trustee Christian, for that. That was just so well said. You know, I think tonight has been. My favorite study session because we are hearing from people from our community, what they're experiencing, what they're seeing. We're hearing so much pain. One of the speakers said they were feeling hopeless. And I think that a lot of people have been feeling that way this year. We can't forget, we're still obviously dealing with this pandemic. And at times I feel hopeless too. I stay up at nights and I think about everything that we have to get done and what we haven't done and. The things that we need to move forward so that we can support every student. And it's hard. It's hard because I hear our parents who are struggling with students who are going through mental. Who need mental supports, who need in-person learning. I hear our teachers who are seeing their students struggle. And on top of that, they have their own children at home that they have to support as they are supporting the children of others. I hear, you know, about the multi-generational homes that we have in our communities that people are having to think about as they go and get groceries every day. And fearful of bringing back this illness. I know we're going to be discussing this more in the next two weeks, but I just want to say, I think we all hear you. The five of us are from this community and we care. We all have roots in this community for various reasons. And I don't want to put words in any of my colleagues, but I feel really proud to serve with everybody here because ultimately we're all here, I believe. Because we care about the children of this district. And whether we're coming from different spaces, sometimes we agree or disagree. We ultimately are coming from. A place of love for every student in this district. We ultimately are coming from a place of love for every student in this district. As I make decisions, I think of the students I've taught and I continue to see and stay in touch with about our teachers, classified staff that are putting their, their lives on the line to educate our students. I agree with, with, with one of my colleagues that called in and said, all teachers are heroes, all classified are heroes, all principals are heroes. They absolutely are because you are doing whatever you can during this very difficult time. I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank parents. I want to thank students. I want to thank our staff for everything they're doing on a daily basis. But I agree with trustee Christian. We need to roll up our sleeves. We need to get ready for whatever that is, summer, fall, spring, whatever that is, wherever we end up. It's time to roll up our sleeves. I want to thank our interpreters tonight, our ASL interpreters. That was amazing. I'm so glad they were here. Of course, our Spanish interpreter, as always. I hope that we can continue to have our ASL interpreters moving forward because that was an amazing resource. I love some of the ideas that the unions brought forward today and the parent groups. Honestly, I wish this was happening on a weekly basis where we're meeting with all the parent groups and asking for their input and everything that we need to do. There's been, like one of the speakers said, we've had generations of students that have fallen through the cracks in this district, part because we don't, not everybody has a seat at the table. We have to start providing a chair for everybody that needs a chair at the table moving forward. Some of the ideas I heard about having some of our sites being vaccination clinics, I think that's great. I hope that we can reach out to the county about making that happen, about a district labor task force to, to continue to advocate for vaccinations because our county is still behind, our state is still behind. A district parent leader task force that can look through the summer plans, that can look through whatever plans we create, we need to start that as soon as possible. Anyways, I just want to thank everybody who presented tonight. I want to thank everybody who watched. And, and, you know, we have to roll up our sleeves as our colleague Christian mentioned tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your words, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi. We are now going to move to Mrs. Reckler.
So I want to thank everybody who attended tonight or spent all of your evening or part of your evening with us. I want to thank all the presenters and I want to thank everybody that put presentations together. And I especially want to thank our parent groups who, not only what they did is that they went out and they polled their parents on a volunteer basis, weren't paid, solicited their opinions and put them together and brought them here to be here tonight. And that's kind of tremendous community that we have here. So thank you to Shakira and Zaln and Erica and Stephanie. Love you guys. I, you know, I deeply appreciate all of the efforts and the passion in this community and your care for the community. And I know that with all of our resilience and our brilliance and our resourcefulness and our grit, I know we can make progress and we can move this forward. And now it's time. It's just as simple as that. It starts by talking and meeting and making a plan. It's absolutely right. I appreciate all of you and I just want to mention that we have parent groups meeting all the time, parent leadership council, which is the heads of all of our main parent committees meets weekly. PTA is out there. There are site councils meeting. There's, there's plenty of ways to get parent input if we'd like to do that. And I think we all know how to get there. But if anybody needs contacts or wants introductions, I'm certainly happy to make those. Once again, I appreciate all of you and I hope you enjoy what's left of it this evening and enjoy the weekend. Thank you.
Thank you for those words, Mrs. Reckler. We're going to go on to Mr. Lea.
So yeah, I'd like to thank everyone for voicing their opinions tonight. And I hear your concerns and your frustrations with this situation. As a senior at middle college, high school, I also like share the concerns and the frustration that other parents and teachers have expressed tonight. And I personally have also witnessed as a tutor at Contra Costa College, a math tutor, the impacts that distance learning has created and trying to help the different students there as well. And the most important thing I think we got from this meeting is that we need a plan from all the parents, the teachers and everybody else, that just every comment that I heard was that we need a plan. And I just want to thank all the parents and teachers for voicing their opinions. And now is the time and that our voices have the power to, to create change. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lea, for those words. Ms. Emilio.
I, again, I also want to say thank you so much to everyone who came tonight. We spent your Friday evening talking about reopening schools and expressing your concerns. I want to say thank you to the parents, the staff members, the community members, and even the students who came tonight to speak up and speak out about what they're experiencing and how they feel. To echo what trustee Gonzalez always said earlier, everyone really needs to have a voice at the table and you coming tonight and speaking up really provides that. Also to echo what trustee Young said, it's really important that we have a plan, not only that we have a plan, but a plan that is transparent and that everybody knows about the plan. And by doing that, it could, it not only makes going back to schools actually safe, but makes students and staff members and teachers and everybody and parents and everybody that's going to be involved in that process feel safe. And I think that it's really important that it's transparent. But yes, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for those words, Ms. Emilio. Mrs. Smith Folds.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming. Thank you for sharing. I asked myself, why? Why me? Why now? And I prayed on it. And my prayer was, how am I to lead? How am I to be everything to everyone? And this is what the answer came to me. It says that your life has led you to this moment. You are a teacher who has been in the classroom. You are a registered homeschool teacher. You were born black and a woman marginalized and undervalued in a country from birth. You have been, you have the privilege to have three daughters, two who are in the district and one with an IP. Your parents are an inorganic chemist and a marine biologist that works for the EPA. You helped write your husband's essay to get into college. So you have the opportunity to stay, to stay at home and to live, to live off of one income, to be a parent volunteer every day from elementary school to high school. So why you? Because your life and lived experience says you can. So when I give direction, which is what I was elected to do, I do it from a seat of full understanding. I've used the voice of my ancestors to speak for all children for my entire adult life. I'm a mom, wife, teacher, parent volunteer, and now a civil servant. I never asked anyone to call me a hero. Neither has any of the teachers, parents or civil servants that I know. You don't have to call us heroes because we know we are humanitarians. We serve every single day. So why me? Because I'm every one of you.
Thank you very much for those remarks, Mrs. Smith Folds. So the first thing I would like to do is thank everyone who has watched, participated, called in to these study sessions. This is study session number four. The first study session was over a month ago. And I hope that everyone learned something about this situation. I know that these study sessions were not perfect, but the goal of these study sessions was to make sure that our community is fully informed so we can make the best decisions for our community moving forward. So everything was done with good intent, but I know that they were not perfect. And if you have a problem or a concern with the way they were done, that's my fault. That's not the superintendent's fault or any of the board. It's my fault and you could blame me. And I am just saying though, that it was done, everybody participating. And this was done out of goodness. But again, if you, if you want to blame somebody for any of it being not what you want it to be, you can blame me. So I know people want to know what are the next steps. This study session was intended to be the last study session. I know that our parents, our teachers, our other staff members are very important. The reason why we brought community together this way for the last meeting, frankly, is to be able to make sure that everybody had a base level of information before we move to this type of discussion. I believe that informed discussion is the best discussion. And I believe that when everybody has equal access to the information, the discussion is more fruitful. And so it was not meant to offend any of our staff or community members by having this session be the last one. It was so we could have an informed discussion together. So I hope people receive that because that's where it came from. So next steps, we have a regular board meeting on the 10th. And at that regular board meeting on the 10th, the plan is to give direction to the staff around what the board would like to see happen. It is my hope that we would be able to have a session or not a session, a special meeting in between. So the board has an opportunity to not just listen to the experts, not just listen to the public, which is extremely important, but also to be able to listen to one another. I looked at the calendar support. I'm going to bring you kind of into my comments. I looked at the calendar for the next, for the time up to the 10th. And when I looked at the calendar, the second and the fourth, those were the only dates that did not have a pre-existing meeting on them, whether it's a subcommittee, DL cap, CBOC. So I've heard from three board members already about their availability. The ones who have not said their availability, can you just look at your calendar and see if the second or the fourth works for you for our first discussion of this item? And it would be the evening.
So I haven't had any time to address that today. March 2nd, I'm absolutely not available. And March 4th, I do have something on the calendar, but there's a potential that I could move it, but I'm not able to commit to anything right now. I apologize.
Okay. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you, President Phillips. So I actually have this, practically the same problem. I have work to lay on both those days. Tuesday, I definitely cannot move my work commitments, but Thursday I might. So I will have to get back to you hopefully by tomorrow.
Okay. One of the options, I know we have a budget committee meeting on the 5th. And I was trying to avoid stacking meetings because that was an issue before. But an option would be for us to come back on Friday. So I'm just kind of putting some other things out there, too, right? So the second is out, was what I'm hearing from two of the trustees. The fourth is a possibility. And I'm just gonna throw out the fifth. Because otherwise, if we don't figure out one of these days, we're going to come in cold on the 10th without having a chance to have listened to each other before we give direction to the staff. And I don't think that that's a good idea. So, but I heard, I heard what you're saying. So we're going to look at maybe the fourth. And then if you all, if trustee Reckler and Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, if you could get to me tomorrow and let me know if that works, that would be fantastic. And then we don't have to double up on that Friday. But that said, that was some of the house cleaning that I wanted to do. But the plan is to start the discussion next week on the, on Thursday or Friday, preferably Thursday. And then the next regular, let me, okay, so that's that. I'm going to move on now to the next scheduled board meeting. So we have a meeting on March 3rd. That meeting is a closed session meeting. We will open up in open session like we normally do. That meeting is about the superintendent search. The public is invited to attend. We will be in closed session for most of the meeting. We are not, we're not appointing a superintendent on the 3rd. This is just part of the process. But the public is invited. And if you have public comments that you want to make about that item, you are welcome to do that. So that's on the 3rd. Again, we're going to try to schedule a meeting on the 4th or the 5th. And then we have a meeting, a regular meeting on March 10th. And the plan is to give direction around this issue of COVID-19 in schools to staff. So that said, again, I appreciate every single person who participated in any way in the study sessions. I want to say that I appreciate, and I'm going to call you by name. I appreciate Jamila Smith Folds. I appreciate O3 Christian. I appreciate Dimitrio Gonzalez Hoi. I appreciate Leslie Reckler. I appreciate Thomas Leung. I appreciate Navi Emiliano. I appreciate our staff. And most importantly, I appreciate our community. With that said, I am adjourning this meeting and we will see you soon.